Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public discussion? Anything that's not on the agenda?
I, I gotta make, correct something from last week. Um, said it was Craig Busher that, you know, called me about the land that that was on Jerry Busher.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to correct the, you know, minutes of the records and, uh, get that. So I did what I needed for the person to call me.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else? Not? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Motion, so in a second, by Jarks, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next is review and approve the claims and conservation claims, which have been in our packet. Anyone have any questions on those? Alright, um. Is there a motion for the claims? Motion by Jarks, by Nath, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
Josh, are you in the ayes in that claim, or you wanna go the nays?
Motion carried unanimous. Next with those claims of the budget status report. Any, any questions on that?
Looks like we're sitting pretty good in the year, what I was seeing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, we will let the record reflect, we acknowledge that. And then, Dan, you're up, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alright, well, I was able to get my report out to you via email, kind of late afternoon yesterday, but, uh. For the month of October, uh, not a bad month, uh, we had twenty-one phone calls, fifty-eight voicemail messages and emails. Thirty-one walk-ins, thirty scheduled appointments, had one that was out of the office. Uh, we transported three veterans, we had some, uh, up to three, uh, hearing aids repaired. Uh, the folks that do that now have since retired, so. I'm directing all the veterans to take them to the clinics to turn them into the audiology section. Or they can mail them directly to the audiology in Des Moines. So, gonna miss that, uh, convenience. Uh, we had sixty-eight forms that were completed and submitted to VA. Currently tracking twelve hundred and thirty-two records. I've currently got thirty-two claims in the system, eight are ready for development. I got fifteen that I'm working on. Uh, I've got a supplemental claim in appeals, and then one VA healthcare enrollment. For the month of October, we, uh, completed our fall conference. Uh, I wasn't able to meet with the commissioners last week Thursday due to scheduling requirements and issues. So we're actually meeting later on tonight, so. I will, uh, do a summary and send you an email of their thoughts and roll up from their first, uh, commissioner training there at Can't Dodge. Uh, currently, uh, what we're looking for is, uh, we're planning on some virtual training here December fourth. With association trainer on basically the M twenty-one dash one, which is the overarching VA manual for. Reading systems and a plethora of information on everything in between, so, uh, be interesting. Uh, putting together some district training in December over at the election center. And then, uh, also looking at the virtual training options, both for national and the NBLP website. Uh, I did talk to the association on the expenditure to some of that money on the leadership school. Unfortunately, since it doesn't marry up with any continuing education units in my discipline, they recommend that I don't do it, but. Uh, you know, if I can find something, I thought maybe if anything on an ethics side, business ethics. That might, you know, that might warrant it, but I'd have to revisit that. Interestingly enough, I got some information from the mobile medical unit team and the VA powers that be. Uh, have decided that they're not gonna put the mobile medical unit on the road. From December through February because of anticipated weather issues. So I got it scheduled for the third of March and I'll update the election center, uh, reservations to reflect that, so those, those will be open. Uh, claims, uh, monthly for the month of October. Uh, monthly awards were five thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and four cents, and retroactive benefits was twenty-five thousand nine eleven thirty-six. Uh, year-to-date, we're looking pretty good, thirty-one thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. And retroactive benefits of a hundred and forty-seven thousand four ninety-four thirty-two. The rest of that, pretty much self-explanatory, much of that hasn't changed. Uh, some of that was, uh, a result of just the VA not processing a lot of claims. We got a lot of delinquent claims, uh, that the regional office is recognizing, and it's a nation- nationwide issue. The other issue that I'm experiencing electronically is the mail portal that I up- upload everything to is. It's not processing things, I've had claims that have sat in there for thirty days once they were accepted by VA, but they haven't been loaded into the system and. I'm going to the software developer and they're saying, well, that's not my issue, and I go to VA and they say, no, that's not our issue, and I'm like, come on, guys. Gotta come up with something. I may elevate that to Senator Grassley's representative if he comes around. I'm told he was, I'm told he was over in Winnebago County, so I may share some of that. And then, in the handouts, I sent you just kind of a little article that talked about the VA kiosk being returned into the clinics. The kiosks were, were nice because you could actually take your VA ID healthcare card. You could sign into your appointment, you could sign out. You could, uh, also process your travel voucher that day for travel pay, and it would be done in seconds, so. I'm glad they're bringing that back. Uh, also, since, uh, we'll be looking at December here, I will try and get an executive summary, roll up for the calendar year. And I will get that sent to you guys, give you an idea. And then, uh, at some point in time, I'll need to get with you, Tammy, just to. Figure out how to add that budget, uh, classification code for the IDVA three K. And I'm not sure how to slay that dragon yet, I'm gonna talk to my district president and see how they've done some of that and get some recommendations, but.
Sounds good, anytime again.
Okay. Um, subject to your questions, that's really all I have, guys.
Perfect.
Stay warm, don't blow away out there, I guess.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Howard, I turned it off, you probably didn't see this, just so you can look at those numbers too. Alright, our next item on the agenda is, um. A tile in the northeast corner of section twelve of Sherman Township. Galen, you'd asked for this to be on the agenda, if you'd like to come up, you can.
For starters, I guess I really don't know what I'm doing here, because at the end of your meeting last week, you already made the decision about. You're gonna annex them in and just wash it under the table, and you get the choice about the pond that, uh. Drainage don't deal with the pond, but that pond affects more, which we'll get into that next, but.
We'll talk about that separately.
So, and you made a comment, I watched your, uh, comments last night on the computer. Um, that water that's in that corner doesn't affect me. Yeah, it does. It goes north, it goes through Dave Rivers ground, and then it turns and goes through two hundred acres of mine. So yeah, it does affect me.
The seven point two acres.
And I don't know where you're getting thirty acres or fifty acres there illegally tiled. And I even talked to Don Bash, and Don talked me a lot about drainage when I got him. And he even looked at his map, and he said, they can't do that, tear it out, it's against the law. And he said, there's fifty acres there illegally tiled. So, what did you find out, because, uh, last time I was here, you were telling me you were talking to Tyler. And Tyler says you weren't talking to him.
Well, I did, uh, you had made the claim last week that, that Tyler said it needed to be tore out. And I went and talked to Tyler after the meeting, and, again, and, uh, he said he, he never made that claim. And that, that was simply a scenario, he was giving you scenarios of what could happen depending on the situation. Tyler has, and we have GPS of all the tile there, there's already. I guess if you're gonna say it's illegally tiled.
Yeah.
Then it's been illegally tiled for a long time.
Yeah, the map's right here.
You, okay, you used to farm that, but.
And I hate to tell you about that map, them tiling, right? We farmed it for seven, six years, it's used to that farm, all that tile that's in this map. No, they're not about to.
In conversation with Tyler, this is all a perfect case for grandfathering in, which is why. It's pretty cut and dry, we have GPS locations on all tile that's run there, and. Uh, it doesn't have to be, other than those seven point two acres in the, in the very northeast corner. That's the only water that drains north over into Dave's and then ends up with you, but.
Yeah, but there's already two tiles there that went north.
Correct.
So, you're saying those are the only bad ones, well, how come the other ones are good when there's, they're draining the other way that they're not supposed to go? They're going southwest.
They were already going southwest.
Well, the two to the north and the eight acres is already going north, so what's.
Right. They, they just split the existing lines that were there. That, that, that's all that, that was done, this should have been done years ago.
But this is, you know, this is grandfathered in, the old stuff.
Right.
So, with, uh, though I went out there Tuesday and drew a rough map, they got tents, ten lines going north and south, they got ten lines going east and west. And over on the east side, west side, they got three heading up, and then they got two at an angle. Now, those are all new tile, it shouldn't be there.
Cause it's not. I can show you the map of what was, uh, on the GPS, what was tiled, and, and.
How many lines does he have GPS? Because I went out and was counting them as he was trying to rip across.
Well, of course.
There's ten that go north and south, right?
You get, you get part of the way south and those split, and some of that runs south versus west, right?
There's, yeah, in the northeast corner.
Kind of a hill there per se.
There's ten that go east, east and west.
Yeah, so.
And there's two at a goofy little angle.
So there's that main there that comes in from the east, and they, they just split each of those laterals there. And going south, and then, there's. I mean, it's not straightforward all the way up along, but it's.
Because if you go in Dave Rivers side on the east side of the Lorensex and Blacktuff, you count three poles up, that's where they quit the tiles going north and south. Which, that's not halfway to field. You should go a quarter mile, and that's where the lines would be on the illegals tile. And they went well into the fifty acres that they weren't supposed to tile. But he only did it on Shannon Lynch's ground. He did do it on, uh, the Julia Gopperoots. Cause then Nan is over, she'd be borderline over farther.
Right.
Cause I got ahold of Sunderman, I got ahold of Mark Thompson.
Yeah.
And he says he doesn't deal with, he deals with fair, but on Gopperoot and on their side.
Right. They all, they were just tiling for Shannon, but.
So you're setting the precedent, because I talked to a certain fella up north that we've dealt with for years on tile, and he said I could use his name, Joe Goshi.
Yeah.
Uh, DD four, lat two, lat four.
Yeah.
How come he had to remove tile?
I'm not familiar with that situation again.
You make him move tile, you make this guy move tile. It's fair. You just can't let one guy do something and the other guy can't.
I, I'm not familiar with that situation, I guess.
Well, I made him remove it, cause he tiled into a new tile that was northern Baker, I was thinking of. And he wasn't in that district. And he had tiled quite a bit into a new tile that all the patrons of that drainage district had just paid for, which wasn't fair to the patrons of that district.
Which would be.
For him to get brand new, add coefficient outlet and not pay a dime.
Yeah, which would be similar to another situation that.
Yeah, and we made him on hook and he went into the other drainage district to the west.
And then we upgraded that one. And the preface was, in the end, he didn't want to on hook. And the attorney informed us that we could charge him for both drainage districts. Which would have been right.
Subsurface and surface splits.
Into both districts.
Yeah.
And so he determined that he was going on hook rather than paid. For.
Both of the sides.
Tile improvement in both districts. That, that's that scenario, this scenario is a little different. Cause the tiled ground that doesn't belong to the drainage district, normally we would have them. Go to an engineer, figure the cost of what it would be to hook into that, and how much damage that he would do to the district. In this case, there's a ditch there that they're draining into.
It's all the same.
It would have been minimal, minimal damage, but he should have went to an engineer before he tiled it. That's, that's his preface, as far as I'm concerned.
The right way to do it is definitely doing the engineer and reclass first, but, um. With this already having existing tile that has gone that direction. You're also dealing with a different situation, because the water's going there anyway. It's just a matter of what capacity of private tile is in the ground. And that's one of the things that you should be well aware of from being on the board, is when things are reclassified. You are assumed to be using the full beneficial use of the facility on those acres. It doesn't matter if one person puts in pattern tile every ten feet, and the other person puts in pattern tile every hundred feet. You're charged the same, your private tile has no material difference in the reclassification for a district. So yes, this should have been, those acres should have been annexed in, but they should have been annexed in. When the other tile was put in the ground as well. It doesn't just magically get grandfathered in, because stuff has been there forever. It should have been done right the first time, and it wasn't, so.
Was the tile there? Cause I remember.
Say that again?
Was the tile there? The map says this is what the tile's supposed to be, but I remember talking to Mr. Nath. And he told me he's running around out there trying to find tile and he can't find tile. Well, if he had the map, there's the tile, so apparently the tile wasn't there. So he just put in what he wanted. Cause Mr. Nath told me he was out there running around trying to find tile and he couldn't find tile. Cause I watched him out there one day, they had holes everywhere, trying to find tile.
Did, did they run a main up to that corner?
All I seen was little stuff.
They didn't run a new main.
They didn't run a new.
So if, if they didn't run a new main, they would have had to have something to hook to, and if they didn't cross a road, there had to have been something in the ground. I can't tell you how much, maybe it was, uh, maybe this map is accurate, maybe it's not, but even if there is one point of access. That water was going that way.
Yeah, according to the tile map, there wasn't, cause there's a twelve inch that goes up there and that's the end of it.
That looks like it goes underneath the road by the stop sign, or where the driveway is. And then it looks just a little bit further to the south, there's two lines that go across under the road, and spur in the Gerbers, which.
Fourteen and an eight.
I remember seeing that eight when they redid the bridge, the ditch, there's a tile sticking out. I just thought it was the end of the tile, but looking at the map, no, that's supposed to go underneath the road.
None of those mains are meant to drain that corner that you're talking about.
No, cause I talked to the engineer years ago.
You're talking the northeast corner?
Yeah.
From which map are you looking at? The map of what they tiled, or the count?
The old Sherman, the old map there.
Yeah, but I mean, if there's a line anywhere near it, it's just, the map is probably off, because there's hundreds of places. Where our maps are off, two, three, four hundred feet.
Yeah, but if we can go to the acres that are in that district, we'll figure out if it's drained or not, if those acres aren't in that. Aren't in the schedule, then they're not in the schedule.
Right, right, that, that is still an issue, and it should have been annexed in, and it should be annexed in moving forward. Now, especially now that we know where the water's going, but if there was.
Problem is, is we got too many people that have tried to annex in after the fact, and that's not really legal.
But neither of these areas have improved drains, am I correct?
Well, there's no ditch there.
Well, I have my one.
Yeah, but, but the actual tile is not anything that was improved in the near recent past, correct? There's no half or three-quarter or one-inch coefficients we're dealing with, right?
I, he, he started farming that eighty two or three years ago, and he'd come to the line that was legal, from the south.
He farmed, he started farming that nineteen? I think it's been that long.
The eighty?
Yeah, cause that was transition corner, I think, in nineteen.
Cause I've been out, uh, two years. About three or four years, I would say, oh, time flies.
Time flies, yeah.
Yeah, about four years ago, I probably lost it. I mean, I understand losing that eighty, cause they've got sold.
Yeah.
And then he took it south, cause there's a main down there and the same owner.
Right.
And that was legal, he came halfway up, right, about right to the line that he could do it, he was legal. And all of a sudden, he just comes charging in and does the whole piece.
Plus, I mean, we're also talking the northeast and northeast is not in a drainage district at all, so we're, really, we only. Are talking about the acres that are going to the south and west, which they should be annexed in, um. But if there was already tile going there, you're bringing the same water there, it's just more private tile.
In talking with Tyler, it's not, it changes the capacity. Slightly of what's going into the main, but you're just kind of weighing efficiency and capacity, you're not necessarily draining more water. You're just draining the same amount of water faster.
Yeah, but now you look in that map, but look at lap ten. So over on, uh, Sherman eleven.
Sherman eleven.
That's another one of my farms. So I got eighty acres, I got eighty acres that's supposed to drain in there. Well, now I gotta contend with fifty acres it is. And I'm sure my landlord's been paying his annex tax. Cause Sherman eleven part bit drops to, uh, lap thirteen, which would be in the northwest corner. And then it heads to the same drainage, the same open ditch, but it goes through Maudslay's ground and comes around goofy.
Yeah.
But that lap ten, it goes straight down south and then hits what I call Mill Willam's Creek.
Yeah.
And, uh, see that lap V eight B and lap V A? He's tiling into there now, I gotta contend with his water. So he affects me there, and if you. Earlier, you always said that, well, he took that eight acres and went north, well, then I'm dealing with my map, which he didn't bring that north. He stopped well short of that driveway and.
He was just splitting what was there, then the latterals.
There's, there's no, there can't be any tile in there, if it is, it's all busted. Like I said, I've dealt with that, then halfway down was a big wet hole, over the side's a big wet hole. The south end, he took care of that south end when he tiled over and went, and that was all legal, he took it, see, we couldn't do that because. Gopperoot and Lynch ground, so we can never tile that south end.
Uh, if you're talking about the stuff to the, in the northeast corner, where you say if there's, there can't be any tile there. If he didn't have anything, if he didn't have anything new that crossed the road, there had to have been something there to hook to, that's.
He went south. He went south to where the other line was.
No, that's not what the map shows.
Well, I could have showed you that, you seen the line, he came all the way from the fence, he's well out into the section, the north and south half of section twelve. And he's angled off and a couple of the spurs coming over to it, went through the fence rail, which he tore out years ago, and he come all the way down, and that's what he's hooking onto. I can draw a map any way I want, just to show you, that doesn't have to be honest.
Yeah, yeah. That, that doesn't go south.
No, it doesn't.
The very northeast corner.
He's got that going south.
He doesn't.
Well, then it's going west, which is the same principle. He's hooking up to the, where's it going then?
To the northeast.
It can't.
Where did it go before?
There wasn't tile there, that's what I'm trying to tell you. You seen the water there forever.
Well, we had an unusually wet year too, but I. I guess the old, the, all the, all of the old maps say that there's tile there.
Then why is all his lines, the ten lines going north and south, go all the way down and hook onto, and then he's got cross lines every once or so here and there where he dug.
Those, those ten lines that you're talking about, they, they split about halfway down, and then some of it kind of starts new and goes south. The rest of it comes up into that main and goes west.
He comes up and goes to that, uh, third light pole in Gerber's side. Count three poles up, and that's as far as he went, with those lines all the way down.
Yeah, there's, our maps don't have power poles on them, um.
But I could, I didn't count the poles until they were halfway pointing, cause he was well into where he shouldn't have been. And then he started, then there's a decent little gap, and then he started going east-west. But the principle is, he didn't have permission.
It hasn't been authorized, no.
Right, or did you authorize it, say, go ahead?
I, a- after conversations and knowing the situation in the map, I've taken care of it, then we're gonna annex them in, I mean, that's.
You gave him go ahead, that's what I'm asking.
I did.
Well, then that's against the law, you can't do that.
It's, it's no different than, than.
The board, five, you are a trustee, he's a trustee, you need three of you to say yes, you can't do it on your own.
All of us have repair requests that come in here all the time that are already completed, so you could say that was unauthorized work.
Is it, is it in the drainage district?
No, it's, it's come, it's outside the district into the district, we're doing an annexation.
No, but you're talking about, you get, you get other things that come in, those are in the drainage district, this is not in a drainage district. You need permission from three of the five of you.
Galen.
You can't do it on your own.
At the same token here, if there's existing tile in there, even if a fraction of this map is correct. If the water was already going that direction, the same process needs to be done, whether he's putting new tile in the ground or not. So whether he puts more tile in, or he doesn't, the same process still needs to be done, whether it's a voluntary or involuntary annexation. The board, as trustees, needs to go through that process to get those acres to pay. Whether he puts more tile in or not doesn't change that map.
You said the board, correct?
Correct, yes.
Well, Mr. Nath went on his own and said, go ahead and do it.
But it doesn't, it doesn't change anything if there's already tile taking the water that way.
It does, because you just gave somebody permission to drain acres into a district that are not into the district. The tile that was entered to the core, they'll run, to this situation, it makes no difference. If that was done anyway before, nobody knew about it.
It still needs to be annexed in.
You have to.
Yes, no, yes, no need to be annexed.
It needs to be done in the right way.
Well, it's like a lot of things, it falls on the back of the Tyler, the Tyler ship never put that into a drainage district without knowing what he was hooking into.
It's, he's got his own Tyler ship, he did hire Tyler.
But the Taman is the Tyler.
Taman is the Tyler, that's why you can just pull in, do what you want, don't ask permission.
He should know better.
Well, Mr. Nath told me that he's dealing with one down by West Bend, the same person.
That's not, that's not the same situation.
You told me you're dealing with the neighbors turned them in on illegal tile down there, is what you told me the first time I talked to him.
I did not tell you that, Galen, there is no, we're not dealing with Mark on any tiling by West Bend.
Cause you said you wanted to deal with it ahead of time instead of after fact.
What?
When I talked to you that morning, you're coming up down the Blacktuff. You said, I'll talk to him now, I said, we can't do a thing until he puts a piece of tile in the ground, then he's illegal. Right, now just set the stuff in the ground, you can do whatever you want. You said, I'd just as soon do it ahead of time instead of aftermath, cause I'm dealing with him down by West Bend, his neighbors turned him in, is what you told me that day.
I did not tell you that, and I don't know what I told you, but that's a culvert under the road, that has nothing to do with tiling.
You told me you're dealing with tile and waters, is what you told me that morning on the phone.
Okay.
I think you're.
I, I, that's besides the point, but. Um. The, the, I guess at the end of the day here.
You're just gonna do what he wants to do.
No.
Are you gonna interrogate?
I had all the information, all the facts out here, I had all the maps, had locations, they're more than willing to work with us, they realize they're gonna be annexed in whether they like it or not, and they want to be annexed in. And so, I felt, I selected to take care of the drainage of the, the district, I. This, this is okay, I understand the situation, gonna bring it before the board, annex the acres and, and life goes on. I, it's the same, same landowner, all, all the way down there, up into the drainage ditch. And that runs and dumped in the Prairie Creek, which will be my grandpa and I's pasture now, and I guess it, I, I don't know. I, I'm very comfortable with how things are going here, but.
So the next guy just wants to tile what he wants, it's fine with him? Same principle.
Depends on the situation.
You let one do it, you gotta let them all do it, so why do we got rules? Why is there idols?
We're going through the rules, they understand that if they do not get annexed in, they will have to tear all that out, I mean, I told them that. So that, that's, that's perfectly understandable. I visited with Tyler about this, so.
So the next question is, is that he hooked this tile into a main?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Has that main been engineered to handle this water?
This has not been improved. That was one of the questions I asked before. It has not been improved. It's an old outdated system.
Water into a main that's not large enough to handle. He's gonna have to pay to enlarge that main for all the other tiles, for all the other farms.
This, this would be no different than others that we have let go into other systems that are a hundred years old. We've added five acres in the back corner of a field that's up a little bit on the other side of a hill. We've added, how many other places? If they're, if they're going through the process, the timing of it is, leaves room to be desired. It should have been annexed before the tile was put in the ground. Yes, but since there's already tile in the ground, you're not changing the direction of the water flow. So the process needed to be done regardless of how many strings of tile are in the ground.
When I was on the board, I remember, uh, I believe it was Jay Albert or his brother. Can't remember his brother's name. But anyway, we were over by Wydenmore and they had to come to us. They wanted to put, and we had to make sure that the main was big enough to handle it. And then the engineer said, it will take it. So it was a five unanimous vote, go ahead and do it because the main is big enough.
That was for a project that had had an improvement.
Is this main big enough?
This has not had an improvement recently.
Well, look at all the extra tile you just put in. That's a lot more water.
I, I think you're missing the point here. The point is the system's a hundred years old, per se, roughly. We've got a project north of Sway City right now. It's going to three quarter inch coefficient. If someone comes into that, that is not part of the district, that would be a different issue than tying into something that's already a hundred years old, overloaded, slow, needs work, probably in general. So if you think the capacity of the system can't handle what's there, then an improvement petition is the route you should take. But if this water has been going there anyway for decades maybe, um, those acres should be paying assessments, but we're not paying for a project that just spent fifteen hundred dollars an acre to get a brand new outlet. That's the difference. We've talked about that countless times with every other request for annexation.
One question for you then, okay. There's a big pond there all summer, right, Mr. Nath?
Yep.
All right. If the tiles are taking the water, why the hell is there a pot, water puddle there? Answer that one.
Why is there?
No, if the tile was going right through there according to his map, why was there water there all summer? Until about mid-August to late August, that tile should have took it, correct? That's how tile works, right? But when the tile ain't there, it's busted, it ain't going.
Is that water going north?
In the very, very northeast corner.
So that whole area is in a different drainage district and the water goes north at a different time?
No.
No, one eighteen is.
The north, the northeast and northeast is all private. It's not in a district at all, on the border around the edge here.
There's no drainage district there?
No, no district at all. The only district is to the southwest.
Cause then you get north a half mile, that's all private direction.
What are you desiring the, the board to do today, Galen?
He's be taught a lesson. Punish him somehow. I mean, it's not right. You just can't do what you wanna do. And slap his little fingers, cause what's gonna happen? You're gonna do it again. You're gonna do it again. Or this, if you're taping it, how many people thinking about tiling now? Now they're like, the hell with it. I can tile. They didn't do nothing to this guy. They didn't do nothing to me.
That's what the process for annexation is for.
That's right. He should have stopped in before the annexation, it should have been done. But he didn't do nothing. He gave permission and said, go ahead and do it and we'll annex it in later. Correct?
If the water is already going there, it doesn't change.
You can't tile it. It's, I guess we're on different pages.
Well, it shouldn't have been tiled before, whether it's ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. Those would have been the same status of illegal that you said last week. Those tiles would have been put in, not in compliance with the law. So it should have been done right.
To want to retile it, if, if it had adequate drainage, you know, I mean, there's, there's a problem with drainage there. So he tiled it illegally. If there was tile in there that was adequate, why did he retile it?
Cause it wasn't working or it wasn't there?
Yeah.
Well, isn't, it is a fact that he tiled it legally. It's his land. He can tile it. But what he did, what he did wrong is he hooked into a drainage district, which he has, he has no right to hook into. He should have put in, he should have put in his own lane, tiled to drain that lane somewhere else rather than hooking into a drainage district where the farmers are paying assessments for years.
See, half of that eighty there, he had permission, but the other half of the eighty, he didn't have permission. So there's forty there, then there's ten off to the side to the west. That goes all the way over to that pond.
This is also, I mean, in some ways, this is no different than the other situation. The individual you named previously that tiled across district lines as well.
He got punished. He had to turn it out.
No, that's not, that, we have another situation that's still ongoing, dealing with lawyers that has fees stacking up every time we get a bill. That's still in the ground functioning. So the board still has to follow up and make sure that that situation is taken care of. But as long as those acres pay for the drainage they are receiving, at the end of the day, everybody in the district is on a fair playing field, which is where they should be. So the end result of having it annexed in, really, what else is there for us to do? We could tell them to take it out, but that doesn't solve anything. If there is old existing tile in there, that doesn't change anything. The acre should be annexed so that they pay for the benefit they're receiving. Then nobody is damaged at all.
So what are you gonna annex? Eight acres that you keep talking or the forty?
That's up to when we appoint the engineers to decide.
Cause it should be eight acres. It should be the forty. Cause you, you got the map of how much tile.
No, not annexing in eight acres. It'd be annexing in the.
The whole thing.
Not the whole thing, but everything except that. Seven point two in the corner.
So if you, if you.
So where's that gonna go then?
Where it's currently going.
To Benjamin's main. Which I think we, I, they believe and say that we had enough water.
Oh, Da- Dave's is Benjamin's. Yes.
Let's, let's deal with the annexation of this and then we'll go to that pond.
Yeah.
Well, this wasn't the pond. This is, this is water's coming.
We're not talking, we're not talking about the pond at all, but if you, if you look at the tile map that Carter sent, it says Sherman twelve new tiling, which I printed out for you, Galen.
Yep.
The, there's a little bit of rectangle there in the northeast corner that would go north and east wherever. So that would not be, just from my looking at it right here, that would be the only thing there that would not get annexed in. Otherwise, everything else should be annexed in.
You're talking about three yellow lines and the two red lines.
Correct, yep. And I mean, where, and there may be a percentage of that that still would be classified as surface water that could go towards the other district if it crosses there. But that looks like the split of the watersheds based on the tile maps. So.
So he's saying existing tile was way out there, then how come he put that line right alongside the ditch? He went right on top of the old tile. That first yellow line to the north, he's got one right on top of it.
That'd be.
Cause this is, uh, four inch tile and this is existing tile is the red one, which is, it's quite a ways off that ditch line off the.
Yeah, so he's saying he put a new one by the road.
Well, he has, oh, no, that's a four, the yellow means it's the old stuff, correct?
Yellow is new.
No, yellow is new, red is old. Red is existing. There's a legend at the bottom.
Okay. Cause yeah, he did put one right along that ditch.
Yeah, so that would, that would, your, your visual of seeing the field would line up with his maps at this point.
He's got one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I counted ten when I was out there that day. Ten going east and west. He's got eight. Where's the other two?
There's other new ones going east and west, but they go the other, they're hooked in the other direction below that.
Well, we go right off the edge of the road, Kyle.
Yeah.
Ditch line.
Yep.
Okay, the first one is, is one, then there's two, then there's three, then there's four, then there's five, six at angle and seven, eight. He had ten lines. I counted them. That day I was out there last Tuesday. He's only got eight on his map. Where's the other two?
I don't, I don't see anywhere you count eight. You've got.
He's talking to four in the corner.
East and west, Kyle. What's it go east and west?
That's what he's saying, looking at.
Where's the other two? And he's counting, let's see, the north, south ones. He's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. He's got those right. He's got ten there. But the east, west ones, where's the other two?
At the end of the day, if there's, for him to be able to hook up and go north and east in that corner, there had to have been something there to hook onto, um, so.
Cause he put new tile. I don't know if it was a main years ago, like halfway down the field, like right now. I'd say wouldn't be dead center of the forty, but it was close.
Okay.
And like I said, that was all legal. We didn't, nobody said nothing about it. Cause that was the edge of the, where he could top. Like that was the first year he got the piece. He went in there and dropped that in right away. Cause there's a little wet pocket there. Like I said, we couldn't do it because Gophers couldn't go on Lynch Ground.
Okay.
But this is, now it's all Lynch and Lynch Ground, being he's got that eighty. So our hands are tied in that, up in that area for us. But he should not have been able to tile that northeast corner until it was annexed and then go in and tile it.
But my point is, we have others that have also put tile across district lines where they shouldn't have. And we have to go through the process of making sure that they pay for the benefit they're receiving. Whether it's voluntary or involuntary or requires court action, that the end result is that everyone should be paying their fair share for the drainage they're receiving. And if we accomplish that goal, what else is there? Um, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're supposed to ensure. That everyone's paying their fair share for drainage.
Cause you're going right in that corner. They were gonna bring a main off that south, be Laverne Township, right across the road to these. They're gonna come all the way from Prairie and put a big ass main all the way across. This Benjamin's ground.
Okay.
Go underneath the road and then cut my corner there. And then my landlord was gonna pay sixty some thousand, just hook onto that main. And then they're gonna go underneath the road to the north.
Do it privately?
Yes, it's all private.
Yeah.
But then that got canceled. So then we had nowhere to go with that water.
Okay.
So now he comes in and just takes it where he wants, which ain't right.
Because he's currently not on the schedule, but once those acres are on the schedule, they'd be paying for their share of drainage. If there's, if there's been any recent repairs or upgrades, then we could talk about a back assessment. But since there's no improvement, chances of having any financial consequences, they're probably slim to none.
The last year repair was done with this, this is twenty twenty two.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be personal. It'd go to the drainage district.
Right.
What we have to do is just.
We have to follow the process of annexing.
And I don't know. We better do it now because it's done. So I would suggest that somebody make a motion to go to the engineer and have him file a report with us so that we can do it.
To, to annex this property?
Right. So that's what we need to do. And talking about more isn't gonna fix it.
Right.
It's already done. And Don wants to make a comment.
Uh, in the past, we've done this, but the person who's asking for voluntary annexation always paid for the engineering.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
And Jim Hudson went over it to make sure everything was legal. And they had to sign a document that they would pay for that.
Right.
Yeah.
And that will happen again.
One other item though, Carter mentioned that, that drain went to Prairie Creek. It actually goes to a drainage ditch before it crosses out of the drainage district.
I mentioned that.
No, you said Prairie Creek. It goes to the drainage ditch.
It, it's, it goes to that open ditch.
Pardon?
There's an open ditch there inside and.
We mentioned that, yep. Yep.
Yep. But it's gotta go through, you're saying Mill Willows Ground, which is a drainage dish, and then go through Henson's and then finally drops in.
Exactly. It ties in about a quarter mile north of Mill Willbell, used to live.
So somebody should make a motion that we take it to an engineering firm and we'll let Carter decide. It's in your district. What your engineering firm, he'd like to take it to, and all costs will be borne by the landlord.
Yep, yep. And I, I've been in conversation with Shane in Lanchon, California. He's, yeah, I was hoping to have a letter by now, but hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll, we'll get something ready for that.
Okay. So you wanna make the motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to, um, proceed with hiring Bolton and Mink.
To do it.
To do the annexation for these acres.
For this property.
This property, I should say.
Okay. And all costs are gonna be borne by the landlord.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
So you're gonna annex eight to the north and then the other?
That'll be up to those.
Forty-two to the southwest.
That's, that's up to, one, up to the engineer, but two, if they're going to the north to a private tile, we have nothing to deal with annexation because there's, it's not a district. So it just wouldn't be part of a district, but yes.
Just don't mean he took the order to the south and didn't go to the north. He just will annex all fifty acres. But then you're gonna make the copper root girls have to pay too then, correct?
Well, that, whatever is part of that.
We, we do, we do have a motion. Let's get a second to this.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, second by Jarks. Is there any other discussion?
Want to make the motion back?
Yeah, yeah, if you could repeat what you have down, Tammy, whenever you're ready.
Motion by Nath and second by Jarks to proceed with hiring Bolton and Mink to complete the annexation on, on tile in the northeast corner of section twelve of Sherman, Sherman Township, and all costs will be borne by the landlord.
Okay, yep.
Sounds good.
Any questions on the motion or discussion? Roll call vote please.
Plath.
Yes.
Jarks.
Yes.
Wacter.
Yes.
Nath.
Yes.
Stucker.
Yes, motion carried unanimous. Right.
Just stay up there cause the next one will need to.
Yep.
That's fine, yep.
Go ahead on the pond, um.
And when I get done, Dave River would like to talk, cause it's affecting him too. His, the land that is right beside it. Okay, I, I lose track of time. I don't know, two years ago, Dave, three years ago, they put that pond in?
Yeah, two, I think.
Two years? And uh, my cousin does a lot of tile. He used to, and he knows the, all the fancy words and everything. And he was telling me this fall, we're talking that a lot of the water that was coming out of the Laverne section. There's an intake on the one side of Laverne section, intake on the other with the culvert going between it. One's on Dave's ditch, one's on my ditch. Well, the water kept gushing out a long time. Filled the ditch all the way up. Then it runs into my field. Huge pond there. Goes through the yard. Big pond to the north. Big pond east of the house.
Yep.
I mean, I lost a lot of acres. And it was due to, whenever you put water, what I was told, whenever you put water on top of a tile, you create hydrolysis, which pressurizes the tile. Well, when you got fourteen million gallons sitting on top of your tile, it's pushing the water out. And I talked to Ken, uh, Brian Toomey about it and he said, it's a very unique pond. There's, he doesn't know if it's legal or not legal. And he said, if you want it torn out, you gotta go to higher. And, but another one of my main complaints, which it didn't affect me, it affected Dave. Because I was a supervisor for years and I know you cannot change the flow of surface water. It's against law. It's in idols. And in that southwest corner of Dave's field, that water always went to where that pond is. That farm, we always called it the duck pond. It's a sixty acre field and thirty of it was always underwater. Well, the water couldn't go there anymore. So it stayed on Dave until I think I looked about August thirtieth, his, his ponds finally disappeared. And the water was filling up and it was running in the ditch, the south, the, the north ditch, going around the pond. And then it was running in, the guy that owns the pond's ground. So I physically watched him take his skid loader, where he tore the fence down, filled the sod and dirt off, went up to the corner of his pond, made a dam so that the water couldn't run on his ground. You can't change the flow of surface water. Is there anything we can do about how he's backing up Dave's water? He's putting pressure on our tile and so it's squirting out, you know, with it, an intake is actually an exit. And then the water's running on me. So I mean, what can, like you said, Kyle, it's got nothing to do really with drainage, correct? But you know what I'm getting at? When you're putting pressure on the tile, it's squirting out, correct?
Is it in a drainage district?
No, it's not.
There's no tile.
Then we're on the wrong floor. So it's just private tile.
Courtroom upstairs.
Do you have an issue there? I mean, I've visited with a couple of different people about it to figure out if there's some way the county could be involved in that and I.
And what about the surface water? You can't change surface water, even though it's private, can you, Roger?
But it's not a county facility.
You can't have a tile outlet out of a pond going into somebody else's ground. You can't have a tile outlet out of a pond going into somebody else's ground. Privately either. You can have a tile outlet going into a pond, but you can't be draining it. In maintaining water level using somebody else's private tile, unless you have permission. So it, it belongs in the courtroom upstairs, but I think it's beyond our expertise.
Yeah, I don't think we have any jurisdiction over it at all.
No, private tile, okay, if his pond was leaking into this private tile, and this is the Benjamin farm.
Right.
Can the guy dig that tile up and bust tile right there, say, here was tile?
No.
It's private tile, ain't it?
You cannot damage or destroy tile that was legally put in place. Um, so if it's, if it was there prior to the creation of pond or anything, no, you can't, you can't affect that flow.
But you can't build a pond either and.
Dump the water.
Force hydraulic pressure on a tile that's underneath the pond and then expect to drain it.
That's beyond the drainage code?
Yes.
So, I mean.
That'd be upstairs again, right?
It would, it would be an attorney in the court floor, um, but. I mean. I'm not, I'm not gonna say I'm well versed on what you can and can't do with a pond, I don't know that there's any laws against having a pond dumped into a private tile, like you said. Not aware of anything to that nature.
But I could legally on the intake, I could put back checks in, can't I?
No, what do you mean?
The back check, well, in the, in the intake line.
Yeah.
So the water.
Yeah.
The water go in legal, but it can't come out and flood my ditch and flood my farm.
Yeah, but what'll happen is if it did, hypothetically, if it did have that much pressure on it, that it was blowing out of an intake, you'll just. Blow it out of the tile somewhere else, because especially on an old and frail system, you'll just push a hole somewhere else, so.
So you're not gaining enough?
No.
Personally, I don't think you're gaining anything, but you could do that, it's just a matter of how many holes do you wanna fix? Um.
None?
Well, so I guess your intake is the point where it can relieve pressure if there is pressure on it, but. If you do have a system that would be pressurized, it's gonna find its way out at some point in time.
Uh, my, well, it'd be a mile across Moms and Traugus ground. And then the Hannah Ranch is probably another quarter mile before it hits Prairie Creek.
Too far.
Too far.
I'd get a good attorney. Cause this is beyond our.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything we can do.
No.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen, if Dave wants to talk, I'll leave the floor again.
Yeah, if you had some comments.
Sounds like anything I would have to say is attorney talk, this is all private tile that we're talking about.
Yeah.
But I'll just sort of briefly warn you, tell you what's going on there. Uh, Mark put that, uh, three hundred foot by six hundred foot pond in, holds fifteen million gallons. He's draining the sixty-seven acres that he bought. That's really low, low ground, um. Three of the, two, three of the years prior to him buying that, it was a prevent plan, because you couldn't even get in, and so it's really wet ground. So I thought it was a wonderful idea, I know Mark, um, I, I'm getting to know Mark, I didn't know him ahead of time, but. I think he's a fun, enthusiastic guy to talk to, so I was excited about this pond, in fact, he even told me I ought to put one in my corner right there where. Dylan's talking about where he filled in the ditch a little bit. Um, so I asked him when he was building it, I said, Mark, this is great, what happens if? You, you tile your whole sixty-seven acres and your pond is full, and it's like the end of June, and you're. And then we get another three inch rain. And if you don't pump more water out of your pond, and then from your ground into your pond, how, how, you know, you're gonna have drowned out, what are you gonna do about that? Are you gonna just put up with drowned out stuff because your pond's full, or are you gonna pump it into me? And he said, well, he didn't think that would happen, he, he let it go in December, he drained that. Okay, so that's that situation, then this summer in June, we were out in California, I got a call from him. And he said, uh, Dave, I'm standing here looking at the pond, I've shut the tile off, and the pond is still dropping in elevation. And I've opened the tile up, and the pond is still dropping in elevation, and what that meant to me was he couldn't shut the pond off. Maybe he could actually shut that tile, but then I've talked to, uh, Brian, Brian Casey. And he said, depending on how he built that pond, if he didn't build it with, there's some term he used, that.
The right material.
Yeah, the right material, that it's just gonna leak out through the pond. So anyway, that, I won't take any more of your time, it sounds like it's a private matter, but, uh, I'm unconvinced his. Pond cost me quite a bit of money this year, but maybe it was a really, really wet year, and maybe we won't have a wet year again, so.
Well.
Anyway, that's really.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, so, anything else, thoughts, whatever from the board, otherwise we can just say no action taken on this? Yep, if you're ready, I'm gonna give Doug a call.
Thank you again, gentlemen.
Good morning, Doug, yeah, we're ready for you, for the right of way.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, we can get some plans signed. I should have flipped it over before I took it apart. Did we get those claims, thing, is it just the one paper?
There's more, um.
Oh, yeah, okay, they're all under there, never mind, hang on. There we go.
And this one, um, she was writing a waste paper. I'm just gonna have to sign it with the register.
And this, we all sign?
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning, Doug.
Morning, Doug.
Morning.
All right, we are ready for right of way, Doug.
Uh, yeah, we have, uh, two requests for construction road where I have a way, one is already, the verbal has been completed. And we're ready to formalize that. Uh, the other is one we talked about First Midland Power Cooperative, they are in the process. Uh, right now, their power lines are hanging on a, um. Overhead power poles that are owned by others, my understanding. And they are looking at the, um. Looking at placing their power underground instead of having it overhead on some power poles. Uh, they would be going, moving across two hundred eighty-five street. Uh, with that, which is a level B road, and then the rest would all be in private road riding, or excuse me, private easement. Uh, for that is what they're exploring, and I would recommend that the board would approve this request.
Right, so move, motion by Jarks.
I'll second.
Second by Wactor.
Thanks, Doug.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously.
And then last week, we spoke a little bit about, uh, Leonard Brandt, uh, requests to. Um. Cross four hundred forty street, we've received all the necessary paperwork from, it's actually Adam. Um, and, uh, it would be then giving Adam, uh, permission to cross four hundred forty street. According to Kasoot County policy, uh, with tile crossings.
I'll move to approve that request, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Nat, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. All right.
All right, some signatures here, I think.
There we go, thank you.
And that's all the requests for work in the road right now.
Okay. Next discussion.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, like to just take an opportunity to remind the board of Kasoot County's. Snow removal ordinance, I have a brief summary, I've also included this in your electronic folder. But we'll just quickly go over that, and if you guys have any questions, certainly, this is about this tile, that's just a short summary of it. Okay, um. The ordinance became effective, or this version of the ordinance became effective June twenty-four of twenty twenty-one. And the purpose of the ordinance is to establish our policy and level of service for maintenance of our secondary road system during winter months. Uh, the level of service is to be implemented within the amount budgeted in our approved county budget. Kasoot County engineer or is designated shall implement the removal of snow and ice on all Kasoot County secondary roads. Um, it's important to remember that each winter storm has its own individual characteristics, and they, it must be dealt with accordingly. Uh, Kasoot County's existing snow removal equipment will be used to remove the snow. The entire width of the roadway surface may not be completely clear if impacted snow, ice, or frost. Uh, that is stated in our ordinance. Uh, we also state that snow can be expected to accumulate next to the roadway and at intersections. Uh, these accumulations will restrict visibility of motorists. We state in our pot, our ordinance, that motorists should reduce speed and drive with additional caution during poor conditions. Uh, no additional warning or regulatory signs are placed to warn motorists of dangerous situations due to winter weather conditions. Paved routes have the first priority for snow removal, followed by unpaid routes with residences. And we do state that snow may not be removed from unpaid routes designated as level B or no snow removal. Uh, normal snow removal operations will be between five o'clock AM and six o'clock PM. And snow removal equipment may be called off the road if conditions produce a hazardous working condition. It is not the policy of Kasoot County to provide dry pavement condition. After snow has been cleared, some intersections, hills, curves, and other parts of the secondary road system may have sand or other abrasives placed on them. Uh, Kasoot County will not clear snow for private drives. And our snow operations, our snow removal operations may deposit snow on private drives. Snow from private drives shall not be deposited on the roadway or shoulder. And then Kasoot County, we will assist in emergency situations. If there is an emergency situation, it should be reported through nine one one, uh, nine one one dispatcher, or the sheriff's department. So that's just a brief summary of our, our snow removal ordinance. Um, we see how much snow we get this year, but, uh, it's good to be that period of time again. Does anyone have any questions on that at all?
No.
No.
Okay, uh, construction, uh, the bridge, now by Dana Armed Orchesters, Merrymans are preparing for the barrier rail pour. Uh, so they'll be doing that soon after that's completed, there's some backfilling that is necessary, and then we'll get the guard rail installed. And that project will be complete. Uh, ready gravel and excavating, or continuing to crush gravel, there are about, uh. There are about fifty thousand tons of last week, uh, so we're about halfway through with that crushing pros, uh, project. And we just received word this morning, uh, tile crossing on one hundred Avenue, south of two hundred street. Is going on, that might be going on as a, today, that's a permitted tile crossing of Brian Casey. Uh, we continue to work with FEMA and doing some work, uh, cleaning out some ditches where there's debris. Uh, we're trying to keep, get work done on the roads, getting those ready for, uh, winter gravel roads. Um. We have open positions, Mechanic Shop, Sway City Shop, they advertise, we're advertising. Applications are due Friday in Laverne, we're advertising applications are due Friday. Taitaka, we got an employee that is transferring from Lakota to Taitaka, so we'll be getting a, a, uh. There's an open position in Lakota, and we're working on getting that position advertised. Uh, that's really all that I have for engineer, uh, planning and zoning. Uh, I did receive last week a concept for subdivision, south of Algonah. And then I was just on the phone with a person, and a possible change of zoning north of Algonah. And then from the Board of Adjustment, I did include a copy of a letter, Mark Bolick. Has submitted his resignation from, uh, his position, uh, on the. It would be the Board of Adjustment that Mark is on. Um, I will be returning a letter to Mark, uh, letting him know that we appreciate his many years of service. Uh, on that, Mark was a good Board of Adjustment member.
Do you know off the top of your head how many years he was on Board of Adjustment, by any chance?
I do not.
I was just.
Um, as long as I've been, uh, planning and zoning administrator.
All right. Anything?
Did, uh, Dave, Mary, Mary McCall you?
Oh, yeah, I've been just.
Okay, he, he called me too. Said some questions he's wanted, um. Some like the message on the.
A demo?
A demo, and went to his son and knocked to him.
Yes, we were told to email that information to his son.
And so, he said his son's not an officer of the company, and he was just wondering. Where the confusion came in from that.
Well, Dan had been, that's the way we've been mailing, emailing proposals, and Dan has been getting those. And. Yeah, I, I, I wish that situation would not have happened, but I did.
Okay, well, just wanted to make sure you talked, he, he called me. What, just wanted to make sure you talk, he he called me.
I have been just. You're welcome.
Alright, sounds good, anything else? Right, thanks Doug.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Alright. Discussion with our auditor.
Okay, so reminder Friday flu shots. Starting at six thirty at the election center, if you haven't scheduled one, talk to Donna about that, um if you plan on getting a flu shot. Next week is a busy Tuesday, uh nine o'clock we have a public hearing to incur debt on Buffalo Township urban renewal. I have some concerns. Cause you're not gonna be approving the Buffalo Township urban renewal until next week, but you also have to approve. The debt that same day, so. I don't know how I'm supposed to get all of that entered and get it all done and. So basically you want me to get it all entered, get it all done before you've approved it so that it's ready to be approved. The same day, correct? You're not approving the urban renewal till next Tuesday. But that's the last time you meet before December first. So the debt also has to be approved that same day.
So.
It's Tuesday, December second. Or third.
Would it be? Is that something you feel like we would need to have a special meeting separate from that?
I don't know, um.
To do the paperwork better or what would what would be a solution?
Uh well, I think we need to talk to Amy about that, but um. December first is is a Sunday, so technically it's gonna have to be submitted by the twenty ninth.
Yeah.
It just doesn't give me much time, but.
Or like after, like later in the day, at the end of end of the day on Tuesday rather than during our meeting in the morning, would that make any difference?
You do know there's a hundred parcels, right, that are going into this urban renewal.
What would be?
I don't know, I'm I'm wondering if you. I don't know, you guys tell me, but you know, I.
Later on the day on Wednesday?
That would probably be helpful.
Okay, okay.
So like, like, are you thinking? One o'clock on the twenty eighth, are you thinking later than that or what are you?
Could we do, I know I've got. Well, yeah, I just put it sometime in the afternoon, I've got work to do.
Okay, so November twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth is Thursday.
That'd be Thursday.
Oh sorry, yeah, that's that's. I'm so sorry, the twenty seventh, I'm trying to see the calendar from here, the twenty seventh, okay.
Do you do like three or?
Three o'clock?
Four or what do you?
Well, Tammy probably wants to go home at four, it's David, thank you.
Yeah, so.
That usually doesn't happen, but three o'clock on the twenty seventh, we'll we'll make that work, I would appreciate that.
Three o'clock?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so I will schedule a meeting to approve that then at that time.
Yeah, if that makes it easier that works.
I think that would help a lot.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, the no, the urban renewal public hearing is scheduled for the twenty sixth, so we can't change that. It it's just gonna be the yearly approval of debt that we have to certify. That has is due by December first, but the twenty sixth is the last time we meet unless you schedule the twenty eighth.
And we were talking a million from of internal loan from the world, right? That's what we had talked previously and.
Uh I've looked back on the conversations and everything, yeah.
Yep.
How much you wanna do seven hundred thousand instead of a million, I don't.
Well. We gotta, we gotta have money worth it to do a project or something, so I mean I.
The notice that was published says a million according on what what you had told the attorney.
Let's, I would say unless there's some. Strong issue or serious concern, let's keep it where we had talked, I don't know.
That's fine.
Alright, sounds good, anything else for that topic or anything else in general?
Finished up pretty much um everything in elections, so now we're getting back to. Our regular work, trying to catch up on what we couldn't do during the election time. We haven't started valuations yet, but are hoping to start that, I will be gone, Christie and I will be gone. Uh Thursday and Friday to Isacco Real Estate School. But then we'll be able to start looking at valuations and budgets then when we get back.
Alright. Sounds good.
Then that's all I have.
Thank you. Deck, you had anything for?
Board else tomorrow morning and then next Monday I have our check.
Okay. Roger?
Ed and I caught last night. Budget looks pretty good so far this year. We're holding our own, the biggest issue that we have coming up is the buses that we used to buy for a hundred thousand are now a hundred and fifty plus. And the grant that we got for two point three million. The government pays, sorry, the federal government pays one point seven of it. That's, we're gonna have to pay the rest and five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars coming out of our budget is gonna put us into the red. On net worth and so we're trying to cut the buses back to thirteen. And hoping that we get the same number of dollars from the federal government. Their policy is not to do that, so they're gonna have to change their policy. The next thing that they threw at us, we used to be able to sell the buses and keep the buses or keep the money. As an asset, now anything over five thousand dollars, the government is going to request it back. Of course. Don't know where this is coming from. It's coming from the federal government and it comes from the transportation department. It's hard to get answers out of them.
Yeah, I believe that.
We're trying. So that's kinda where we're at, so we're not gonna have as many new buses as we used to have, but we'll have to make. So if you hear that we're sending one point seven million dollars back, that's correct, we are sending it back. But we're gonna try to get one point seven million for fourteen buses instead of twenty. Just a little bit, we can actually keep our books balanced. That's, that was the biggest thing last night.
Alright. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Josh?
Uh no meetings last week, I did get uh economic development, that's what I'm for.
Okay. For?
Uh no meetings, I just have, I've got North Iowa Community Action as well as Moon River Watershed, both on Thursday. Yeah, that's. That's about all, yeah.
Okay.
Coming up.
Yeah, I have CAJDC on Friday and I think that's about all. Alright, um Marge, we're ready for repair requests and then we'll have our public hearing here at ten. Thank you. Alright, Roger, I'm gonna read off yours whenever you're ready.
We'll go in order, number one thirty-two. They did some private tiling in Cresco Township and. The tile they put in actually has no outlet unless they clean the silt out of the bottom of the ditch. Because it's silted in for. Ted told me probably a half mile. Which would probably be, I don't know, I'm guessing four or five thousand. So is it alright if we just have rights will clean out that half mile? I see no reason to hire an engineer.
No, not for that, definitely don't need an engineer for that.
And then I have number one thirty-three, this is Gary Leacon, now we have a half, a quarter mile of open ditch. Uh I had rights will give me an estimation, it's no, it's only about two foot deep and it needs to be dug out and made two foot. Keep blowing out the tile on the top side of it. But Gary's uh concerned about the cost to him and his neighbors, so I'm gonna have Marge run a spreadsheet on it to. At five thousand dollars to see what it's gonna cost everyone. And make everybody happy maybe. And then I have number one thirty-five, which is in Buffalo Township, another one of them, there's a lot of trees on both sides of the dredge. It's in uh Greenwich District HK five eighty-seven, they've been there quite a few years, they're big. I don't know if it's gonna come under the threshold of a hundred and twenty-five thousand or not.
How big of an area?
Half mile, short half mile.
You don't think it'll be under a hundred and twenty-five?
I don't know. Thinking uh maybe I'll have rights over our credit league go out there and take a look at it. And give me an estimate and then I'll come back to the board with a decision on how we should handle it. If we don't have to hire an engineer, we're gonna save the uh those people quite a bit of money.
But we still have to have a public hearing over fifty.
Right, we'll have to have a public hearing, but we won't have to hire. An engineer.
So. Yeah, I would, if you think it's even pushing six figures, I would say probably get. I don't know, three quotes maybe and then.
Yeah, but the other problem is I can't get done until next year, so it's gonna dump on somebody else other than me to finish this.
Yeah. And even the public hearing, we wouldn't even, we probably won't even be able to have that before you're off the board.
No. But I could get, I can send three people out or two people out to get bids and see what it costs and then next week we'll go from there.
Do you want me to go out with with you to look at it and stuff and?
I've already gone.
You've looked at it?
A lot of trees, but there's a lot of fall there, it depends upon how they do it, they're gonna. Take the trees out and dip the bottom out, leave the stumps.
Maybe, maybe we could give Josh a project since he'd be.
Hey.
Carrying it into the new year.
This is one of them where. I don't know if you can do it wrong and I don't know if you can do it right, but I'd kinda like to get a guesstimation on what's gonna come.
Which one is that?
It's in Buffalo Township, section thirty.
Oh, that's your one thirty-five HK five eighty-seven.
Yeah. It's one of them, I looked at it five years ago and uh we got different owners now, that's why they're more interested in doing it. But five years ago they weren't interested in taking trees out and I. My memory's right, there's like two foot of fall on that half mile and that was the reason that. Everyone thought it wasn't doing any harm, but now the new owners would like trees down, so.
Okay. Well, by the code, we're supposed to remove them, um I don't remember what section one forty-six or one forty-nine or something like that. Off the top of my head, but if it's gonna be that substantial of a project, we should probably. Have at least someone or a couple of us that are familiar with it to carry into the new year. Because if we don't have an engineer involved, it will just be the board explaining what's going on at that public hearing. So if there's questions from landowners, um we need to be prepared to answer them. So.
So would you like me to have Marge run a spread on that at? Hundred and twenty-five thousand, see who pays?
Even just a hundred thousand would, you could do multiples of that plus and minus.
Yeah, let's just do a hundred thousand spread and then figure out who's going to pay and.
As if it's, if it's seventy-five or if it's one fifty or whatever, you can do multiples and. Division multiplication, get your numbers pretty simple off a hundred or even ten, I mean.
I think we're the lead county on HK. On that one, Marge, correct?
Okay.
So we'll have to have some conversation with Hancock County too.
Yeah. Well, yeah, let's, I mean. Do you have a list of, like, is it just removing the trees and? I guess, what extent are we fixing the bank? Is it gonna be X loads of riprap or just sloping it back to? Cause I mean, I haven't seen it, is it decent slope that we can restore it after the trees come out or are we gonna take the trees out and then? Five years down the road, the whole sides are falling in because they were. The roots and all that, I mean, that's some of the problems we've had on these other ditches is.
Like Pac one?
Well, Pac one, eighty-four, whatever, I mean, the root balls and the structure that was there gets taken out and then. If we have Mother Nature hit us with a lovely storm again, there's nothing that's. Native soils that's hard to and ready to hold it. If it stays at its same slope.
That's hard Doug, it it freezes out, I've been out there.
I, I mean.
It's a one to one slope on the rest of the ditch, so I'm saying that that's a one to one slope on that.
That's gonna be.
But where the trees are going, you you have no idea what it is, because the trees are outside the bank, down into the bank.
Yeah, that's gonna be rough.
They're all on the ditch right away. Until you take it down, you're really.
You have no idea what the slope is or what the damage is to the ditch.
It can be a two part process too, you can take the trees out like they want and then wait a year and see how much damage is done to the ditch and then.
Repair it.
Depending on the price tags associated?
I mean, there's lots of ways to do this one, but.
Maybe we should take a field trip as a board.
We're gonna have to walk, there's no road to it.
Well, either way, I mean.
Gonna have to be drier.
And that would probably help. After it freezes, then we get a little crust maybe?
Yeah, there's no hurry on this, I mean, you're not gonna get it done, maybe unless you get a contractor that wants to bid it pretty cheap this winter to cut the trees. And then do the dirt work in the spring, that's.
Yeah, that'd be a possibility.
I have a question. So is this the one that you're talking about as part of like of Hancock County?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you do that, then the portion that. Gets done for Hancock County, will that be paid? From Cassoot County and Hancock County?
Hancock County will pay what they're supposed to.
There, yeah, what's what's your name?
Teresa Earl.
Okay, are you a landowner on the district?
No, I'm not, but my husband, uh him and I have a Earl's demolition business and we do. Uh Hancock County tiles a lot.
Okay.
So. Um my question is, would that be paid for by Cassoot County or would they? I'm I'm talking the Cassoot County part of it. Um or or would that be with a warrant chip?
It would, it would be stamped warrants.
Until you run a spread, nobody knows what, who pays.
But it would, I think her question is the mechanics of it, I mean, whatever the bill is, we would pay it um as a request here and then. When we do our assessments and stuff, that time of the year would be the process when we figure out the splits between. Our acres and any neighboring counties that way, so then they would see what. They would know what their assessment needs to be to cover their portion of the bill, but we would do the original. Payment for it in that regard, if it's our request here. So yeah, that would be with warrants.
And another question?
Sure, quickly, yep.
Can I approach?
Yeah, come on up, feel free.
Get mine's part over with and you don't have to listen to me. Get mine's part over with and you don't have to listen to me. Because we did a job for Hancock County.
Okay.
In March. We got a check from Cassous County that we can't cash.
You can, you can sell it, you can sell that.
You could take it to a bank, they will buy them.
I underst- right. Normally Hancock County gives, they sell theirs and then they send us a check.
Yeah, we don't do that.
Right.
There's some that our treasurer's office will buy, but otherwise they're stamped until they're called in.
Right. Well, my question was, was how, how long before we can do something with this?
Depends on the drain. I mean, we could talk with Marge afterwards. We can figure out which strain it is and um, what was assessed and stuff.
Thousand twenty-three eighty-nine?
I'd look like that, probably next.
Next assessment.
Next assessment schedule, so it'll probably be called in.
Depends on the drain though.
It depends on the drain, it depends on what else is in front of it for s- schedule of order and stuff.
Well, when I asked Tammy about it, I saw her in the thing. She says, well, it could be twenty years.
No, I said that they have waivers for twenty years.
I was just checking because I'm fifty-seven and like hell, I might not. Just checking into this, okay?
Yeah.
If I need to, you know, pass this down to the kids to their inheritance, what?
I would. If the thing works like I think it should, it should be next year and so.
I mean, the, the simple answer is if anyone gets it here or whatever. If they could take it to a bank on day one, the bank will buy it.
Okay, I just, I just.
Yep.
Which drain, which drain?
What drain?
That's, that's why I didn't answer a timing question because I didn't know what pain it was.
OHK two thirty-six? We haven't had a big project on that. That should come in next year.
Yeah, I, we're waiting on pretty much. Yeah, I just wanted to know and when you guys started talking about this other project. Cause Hancock County calls us a lot to do those, so I was just curious if. If I would get another one of these or.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't operate on cash on any drainage district. Like some counties have a fund where they keep paying. Expenses out of. This county never has. We've always done with warrants.
What district was that?
Kentucky.
Yeah, we're waiting on FEMA funds for them to come through.
But that was, that was just my question on this other project because Hancock County does call us a lot. We do a lot of Hancock County stuff, so.
HK two thirty-six, you said?
Right.
I didn't know if it would be.
Oh yeah, we.
High again and that's how it would go again or, or what? Just wanted to know.
No, it's a effort, but it would.
Yeah, so.
Yes, yes, I understand.
I'd be the same way.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so we did not do an assessment on that drain. We do have an outstanding balance there that had FEMA repairs, so. That will depend on their paperwork processing timeline, which.
Ten years.
No.
You're killing me, man. You're killing me.
No. Even some of them, they, they do go four years.
I have heard four on a couple of occasions, um. But it, it depends and that's just.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, one of those, one of those things we have to juggle a little bit.
No, I just wanted to know so we could have an idea.
Yep. Yep.
No. Thank you much.
Thank you.
If you don't know, if you don't ask questions, you don't know.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for co- thanks for asking. Alright, um. Any other thoughts on that request, everyone? Okay. Great.
I'll get at least one person to give me a bid before next week and then we'll talk about it.
Okay. Sounds good, um. Do you have one?
I do not.
Okay.
No.
Um, that's what I thought, I didn't. So mine was one thirty-four. It is in section twenty-two of Seneca Township, uh, washout on tile for Phil Meyer. Uh, any questions or motion here?
Yours is too easy. It's one.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carried unanimous. Alright, oh, just kidding. I already gave you the. Um.
Break time for ten?
Yes.
Okay.
Quick break here.
Twenty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready.
Take a break.
Take a break.
I did run.
Okay.
Howard, what do you think today?
So, I'm getting, I'm getting half an education. So, these people do this work and they don't know when they're gonna get paid?
To some degree, yes. So it depends on the scope of the work and the outstanding balances of the drain. We. We had a extensive conversation about that this last year. Long story short, um, the structure of stamp warrants in the code of Iowa, um.
Simple.
Well, so basically stamp warrants are home against the land in the district and. It's, it's structured through the code, so the legislature gives the authority to most counties do that, some kind of keep a cash out. So that's kind of it, to borrow and retrieve cash on the. But if, say Joe Blow goes on a place in Iowa, thousand dollars, okay. What we do drainage claims once a month, so the first Tuesday every month has drainage claims and then a regular claims are the first and third Tuesdays typically unless they broke that off. But drainage claims are once a month, so when we get the bill, we process it and it gets paid on that first Tuesday morning. From the time the board approves it till the funds eventually come in from doing assessment. Interest is accumulated on that principal balance from, from the bill.
From the contractor.
Yep. So. They're collecting interest from the day it's proved by the board until the funds come in.
So, so, so Jack's offer to buy it, is that he'd buy it at face value, then he'd collect the interest?
Yeah, so that's what banks do. They'll buy it at face value and then they hold it until they're called in when the funds are available and then they collect the interest.
So that's the interest.
Right now, we're at five percent. We were at six percent previously and in the last.
That's fine.
Three years, we dropped it to five percent, until we're at five percent. And. The assessment schedule is set by the board typically in May, like early mid-spring-ish. Um. Those assessments are set for fall assessments, so when you get your taxes and all that in the fall, that's drainage assessments are set. In the spring of the year, so.
See everything?
It goes through the paper or process.
Everything, and I don't own very much, but everything I own land or manage or whatever, isn't it? I don't have any.
Right, the tiles.
Yeah, I don't really have any. Smith Lake and.
That makes it.
Black Cat or you can.
Yep.
Are you Howard?
I am.
Derek Olson.
I see you're actually. I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good.
But. When, and we're heavily readdressing our process on assessments, but. The simple way to explain assessments is we should be looking at the outstanding balance of the drain owes and assessing to get at least back to zero or. Within a few dollars or plus or minus, obviously. So then, say you got a thousand dollar bill on a drain that we paid at the first of this month. That'll collect interest till we do assess, we'll set assessments in May-ish and then. That'll get paid next fall at tax time, so it would collect a short year's worth of interest, but. A full set of assessments for a thousand dollars plus whatever interest to get to that time. And then you should kind of zero that balance back out. The complicated part gets when you have a improvement project that. Say there's a million dollar tile improvement project that's half inch or three quarter, one inch full fish or whatever it is. It's a million dollar project and you assess a million dollars and then.
Come to the right place.
Yep.
And then you get people, if we offer waivers, it's like. Deferring your payment instead of paying it all upfront, you can pay it over ten or twenty years, whether it's up to twenty years, but we need that number in there. So say we offer waivers for twenty years, then it's like going to the bank where you've got amortization schedule and you pay. Your payments over twenty years instead of all upfront. But the issue we're in is the numbers of what was outstanding owed. Hello. Um, versus what was supposed to be collected on those. Um. Plus translation. Kind of, yeah. So that's what we are looking at even closer forward is making sure that we have. Outstanding debt that the district owes minus any warrants that are supposed to come in over time. And then any difference there we need to assess for. So. Kind of simple math, once you understand the structure. But when you start talking million dollar projects that goes red out over twenty years for some people. You may have balances out there that could be there for twenty years because the last dollars are gonna get paid at that last payment if everything's on schedule. So. Yeah, it's, people always have the option to pay it all upfront, borrow from a bank or just pay cash or whatever, but.
So you changed the interest from six to five and I know you weren't here.
I would've been here when you changed that.
No, no, but I know you weren't here. Oh, it's like forty years and prevailing interest rate for fifteen, at, at that time you, you changed, ratcheted it up to be competitive.
That's one of the things we've talked about with interest rates being higher now, um. Kind of a balancing act between. Treating our landowners' rate of course, but also having it to the point where banks are willing to borrow on that.
Right.
Because they're gonna put their cash out and collect the interest, so I mean, even like. I can still kind of defend a five percent rate right now because. If banks are willing or taking money on CDs, they might pay someone five percent. So I mean, we're probably close right now. But I don't think we're out of the ballpark because so far no one's rejected.
Yeah, so far it's playing a bad or a bad one.
Yep. When, if we start having banks that won't buy them, then that's obviously gonna be an issue and that's. That's something the contractor or whoever's doing the work has to worry about because. Really, if they're doing a substantial project, they should probably ask the bank that first of, if I get paid a hundred thousand dollars, are you gonna buy it when I'm done? Because otherwise they're stuck holding those warrants until they're actually paid.
And then contractors are upstate. I know some of, some of them have a cash balance, but they're not gonna have a cash balance for a huge project.
No, no.
So it's law or whatever?
Yeah, it's, it's in drainage law, yep. It's, I don't know, are there, do you know many others? I know Hancock has a cash balance they use. But I don't know very many others that actually operate on cash. I know most of them use warrants.
I've had no clue, no clue. I mean, I've been educated.
Well, yeah, I guess. Well, your board sometime, Iowa's, it's drainage code. You could read a whole.
What is it, a thousand pages?
It's a lot of pages. I couldn't even tell you how many pages it is. Um, I don't even think I have a drainage.
No, sorry, don't, don't worry about it.
Well, we got a little like free written here to this, cause Colin, pop quiz for ya.
Yeah.
How many pages of course is it?
You know, I don't know many pages, but there's six, there's at least six hundred sections.
Okay.
So.
So. Like I said.
Sections of what?
Sections of Iowa drainage code.
Yeah.
It's like the, yeah.
It's the, it's the drainage law.
You already answered.
Well, you might, there's some things in there you might actually wanna keep.
I'm finding it, but I'll, I'll wait.
See, you've given the.
There are.
Yeah.
I've seen too many things I don't like.
I don't know if I know you.
Yeah, it's hard.
Oh, it's rare.
That's.
So.
Oh, that's Iowa.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I got a guy that's tried to. How many sections sixteen?
Yep.
Makes that maybe your return.
Yep.
That's all it says.
Randy Ross from Dallas, that's there, yep, yep.
This, that'll see the date.
Yep. I know your son.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, yep.
So nice to meet you.
Yeah, yeah. Jerry, Jerry Warner used to talk about you. You got, you got your friends over here.
Hello, Steve.
Sir.
Morning.
I see you in the right place.
Yeah, it looks like they're expecting you.
Well, what are we doing today?
Everybody wants to be.
They wet.
Yes.
It's a cold weather.
Good? Six inches cold?
Yep.
Here's this interest, so it's going back to the, it's all the bankers realize. So, this is some of the stuff I was just talking about actually, um.
Uh, so we can sit out here for, down there and celebrate planning.
Even if you stay away.
No, it takes a bit to, and start to. Your section, the annexation.
So, that, I had a. Where, where's your area?
Mine as well, I used to be, I used to somebody build in very modesty, somebody built it, they could annex it in.
Typically, we haven't done that on, so if it's been recently, yes, we charge back to there for people. Say, a typical project right now is a generation of thousands, fifteen hundred bucks maker. So, if someone, if you just paid about most maker for an improvement project, three years. And I have one to it, that's when we do, in fact, assessments to make it fair. I, it can be done either way. It can be a.
Oh, like a truffle, she looks at.
It's a year.
Me too.
Good, good.
Must be a fire zone.
Driving east. Cloud.
In the other direction, you can really feel it.
You got a creek that runs full keeping pretty busy.
It was dropping a little bit.
You'd be working, thinking about.
This spring is not. I mean, it does.
So. Where they came. Yeah, sometimes it's too big or too complex or too. Yeah, look. Should we bring the carryover?
Hi, how you doing?
Yeah, I'm ready.
You guys.
It's a.
My hips and my knees and my feet are shocked. Probably take four, I'm sure.
We have two ones that are discovered. No, yeah.
Yeah, it's a great.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, fishing. No, he's doing good. Yeah.
I might get some water here.
Not much, Kevin. You guys have fun?
No.
Yeah, I think you gotta come back to the bear farm.
I can say what they all gonna do.
Yeah, they got, it's not happy. Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, I think we gotta. Yeah, he was just gonna. Yeah, it showed up when he called, I'm not sure what you wanna call it.
You said it, but it's important.
Yeah.
Stuff here, but that shit covered the.
No, it's not. Brad, I understood what you did, yeah. Oh. Yeah. Yeah, cause. Yeah, so the water did go down.
You know that time when you take a speed, drag out.
Yeah, but it.
It's like a lot and breaks and falls off. Oh, my, it gets pretty mellow up top.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't. I know, was that?
Yeah, I got one. Yeah, reshape the date, straight down and done, we just gotta reshape the name, just.
Well, at least.
Yeah, yeah.
We did.
Do you have?
They do.
Okay, I can, I should probably just get a copy.
That's fine. Yeah, that's a, that's a learning process, especially for having people clean. Or feed out real.
Look right there.
Yeah, it's good, it's good. Most of them, well, maybe doesn't want more. Yeah.
Are they gonna be online or calling? I bet they're calling, we need to open the conference line. Cause I think they.
I could maybe call like. Well, do I have? I used to.
Otherwise, like.
I think I have.
I would have.
It sounded like when they planned it, they were planning.
Oh, geez, yeah.
You're making.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure. I have Carmen's too, they want me to go Carmen. Yeah, go ahead, it's fine.
Where did you research?
You might try to. Part, you have.
So, but if she's gonna be.
Yeah, you didn't.
But it's all skin material, so you can't necessarily.
Yeah, there should be on off, but projector, yep.
Right.
I don't think it's on right now. It's, it's working. It'll take a little bit to warm up, it is, it is coming on. I can see it in the top.
Okay. They are on their way, they left at about twenty, twenty-five after, so they should be here.
Maybe they had a nap for breakfast on the way. They on their way. Is there any other? Do we have any other places? We guys hold on. Well, I, I probably.
They were gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right by.
Yeah, yeah.
She can.
She's.
Yeah.
We just threw some chairs together for you guys, sorry we didn't have the nice ones.
I have a list of them coming.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah. So.
So.
Are we too close for one now? Well, I don't want you to catch it cold, but anything.
Did you say Kate Hobart?
Hi, morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay, Carmen's not coming or? Is anyone else from your board coming? Okay, just you guys three, and, okay, and Carmen's not coming or?
Yeah, she is.
Oh, she is?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, we'll give her a couple minutes then, that'll be fine.
She wouldn't ride with you guys?
She, uh.
I can't. I think you never, you need to text her. No, she said she's coming, she, she had to leave it, knew it wasn't.
Yeah, that's right, I heard. Otherwise, we can, if you guys are good, we can get started whenever.
I'll just call her.
Okay, yep. Did everybody get one of these? We got a couple. No, that was, that was the original report. I only printed a few copies.
This, she didn't, this is right, if you wanna start.
Okay. Okay. All right, well. Colin, do you got papers, everyone?
I think so.
Okay, well, we are after ten o'clock here, um, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Nath, do we have a second, pile auto?
I'll say.
Whatever, don't matter.
Okay.
Okay, that'll work. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, our public hearing is open, I'll turn it over to Colin.
Good morning, everybody, thanks, thanks for coming, uh, to talk about this. Again, my name's Colin Klingvile, I'm in here with Jacobson Westergaard. Um, so I, I kinda just, there's a lot that's happened, we've got a report and two amendments. Um, again, if you didn't, I think, I, I tried to condense things down. Um, into this summary handout, so if you haven't got that, um, I think that's probably the most helpful rather than going through all the reports and everything. Um, we did have a hearing in July, so just kind of a recap of that. I guess before I go to that, maybe we'll just circle back. Circle back to kind of the background of the project and what, what led to today. So this bitch, for anybody who doesn't know, is a joint drainage district one. So this ditch, for anybody who doesn't know, is joint greatest district one, so it's got land in Palo Alto and Kasuth Counties. It drains over forty-two thousand acres of land, approximately thirty miles long, so it runs from a little bit northwest of Fenton, and I'll have a map up here, basically to the, really close to the county line with Humboldt County, Kasuth and Humboldt County. So a major cleanup project was done just a just a few years back, and between the construction and the engineering, there was a reclassification and annexation, and basically, all that together was ended up being an assessment over that forty-two thousand acres of two point nine million dollars. And then in May of twenty twenty-three, there was a large flood event. And then we believe also, I mean, you can see pipes and stuff that were smashed, that the the winter prior was, if you remember, there was a lot of snow, a lot of ice, and we believe that in the spring, when that was, the ditch was filled up and when that was melting, it moved and smashed some things and caused damages as well. Repair requests were made by landowners, and then there was enough that the board knew that it was bigger than just doing spot repairs, hiring a contractor, go out, fix this spot, fix that spot, handful, we're done. Now, it it became apparent that there's a lot of damages on this ditch, and so that's when I ended up getting involved. So going back to the last hearing, I had filed an engineer's report, and then an amendment to that, and then talked about different options for repairs to the ditch. We found pretty severe damages, a lot of things that need attention along the ditch. So we discussed that, no decisions were made at that meeting. Basically, where we left it was because in twenty twenty, we had done a survey in like November, December of twenty twenty-three to figure out what the damages were. And then obviously, this spring, there was, there was a lot of flooding, there was disasters declared. And so when we went to that July twenty twenty-four hearing, we weren't we weren't aware of how much damages, additional damages may have occurred in twenty twenty-four. So that was one thing, okay, let's not make any decisions, we need to figure out how much more damages there are, and if there was additional damages from this year, those more than likely were going to be eligible for FEMA funding. So basically, between the state and the feds, that would cover eighty-five percent of of the cost of repairs to damages this year. So we did, oh, before I get to what we found, another another direction for us as an engineer was to go and make a list of the most severe damage sites, basically, the ones that kind of above and beyond need attention, need need attention really quickly. So we put together, we put together a list of the most severe sites that we believe are the ones that basically the highest priority for repair. So that's, that's where we left off that July twenty-third meeting. So we've done that work, we filed an amendment number two, I believe in September, and then we didn't want, we didn't want to have this hearing in the middle of harvest, so then it got scheduled for today. So for today, just again, to go over the amendment two, basically the stuff, the new stuff from last meeting, and then kind of bring and try to bring it all together and talk about the different options that we have, go over objection, we have some written objections, discussion and comments from you all here in the crowd, and then potentially a decision on how to proceed. So there's, again, I just, there was going to be a map, that just shows you the the watershed area of this of this ditch. So it's got lands almost, almost all the way in northern Palo Alto County, almost to Emmett, and then it runs along the western side of Kasuth County, down right by Widmore, and not not too far from West Bend, and then to the south, by Humboldt County. So the first thing we did to try to look at twenty twenty-four damages was we did a drone flight. So it's, as you can imagine, driving four-wheelers and and looking at the ditch and trying to get GPS over a lot of thirty miles of ditch is quite an undertaking, and so we first thought it'd be good just to get a good bird's eye view and go from there. And what we found, and I was fairly surprised by this, but I I found a minimal amount of additional FEMA eligible damages, and so I'll kind of explain what I mean by that. Basically, there was, there was a lot of spots that had damages, like let's say the bank had sloughed in, and you could maybe visibly see that some of those had gotten a little bit worse, like it maybe cut into the bank a little bit more, but very seldom did the length along the ditch increase. So that may, let's just say a hundred feet of bank was sloughed in, there wasn't very often where it now it's like a hundred and fifty feet at that same site, and there was very, almost no new new sites. So basically, and I I checked site by site and compared it with the with the drone footage and and photos and everything that we had from prior survey, and really, the conclusion that I ended up with is that basically negligible amount of stuff that you could say would be FEMA eligible. When it cut into the bank further, well, the repair is still going to be the same, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna shape the bank, or if you're gonna shape it and put riprap there, the repair is really going to be the same, so if that didn't get longer, or there's not really new sites. Trying to differentiate, you know, how much of that FEMA should pay for or not, I mean, that was that wasn't going to be a good idea. So I guess in conclusion, you know, we did the drone flight, and then from what we found, opted not to do a full field investigation to try to, you know, delineate what damages occurred in twenty twenty-four, because they were, they were minimal really in in the context of FEMA funding, which in a way, I mean, there's there's positives and negatives to that, right? The positive is, is that the ditch didn't get wrecked twice as bad as it was. And even though FEMA, if it did, FEMA would pay for eighty-five percent of that, it still weren't going to go back and pay for twenty twenty-three damages. And so you know, if it got damaged a bunch more, you'd still be on the hook for fifteen percent of whatever additional damages there was. So really, all in all, it's it's probably a good thing that it it didn't harm it any worse than it did, considering the flooding that we had this spring. We do, if if anybody's interested, by the way, we did post that drone video of the entire ditch to our YouTube page, and so I've got the our account or whatever, Jacobson Westergaard thirty-seven eighteen, if if anybody's interested in in watching that. So another thing we found is, and this is kind of an aside, so this wasn't something we were specifically looking for, but we did find stretches of the ditch that, you know, some trees are starting to are starting to grow back again after that, after that repair project years ago, specifically, really, in the Widmore area is probably the worst. And so just basically, with this amendment, we just want to point out that there are trees growing back, and we gave a specific from section seventeen of Widmore Township through section thirty-four of Lots Creek Township. We recommend, you know, contacting somebody who can who can spray and kill those trees. You don't want to want those trees growing back. The bigger they get, the harder they are to deal with. For the severe damages, so again, we made a list of the most severe damage sites, that still covers almost eight thousand linear feet of the ditch, so that's one bank or the other. Many of the sites would require riprap, some of them maybe could be shaped back. This goes back to some of the discussion that we had in in June, you know, riprap, bank shaping, flattening the banks back. You know, there's pros and cons to all of those, and I think for the severe damage sites, and I've got several pictures that we'll kind of go through here, just so you you can all see what I'm seeing, from a bird's eye view, pictures of some of these sites. Most of them, you know, it's, there's gravel and sand and other bad materials in the bank, and that was one of the reasons why it was more prone to fail. And so then the question is, if you're just, if you're shaping back, you're pulling more material out, and you have to go somewhere with that, and it's not, it's not good material. And so then that ends up on the lands adjacent, and so you've got gravel and sand and stuff going on the land right next to the ditch, and that's not, that's not ideal. It is cheaper than riprap, moving dirt is is cheaper than purchasing and hauling in and placing, you know, big chunks of of limestone. And then also, the the severe damage sites, we did, we had talked about this before, but there's, there's different areas that had some pipe damages where the end of the pipe got got crushed, and so we're still including that in the severe damages list. So and I apologize, this might be kind of hard to see, but I guess the take, the takeaway here is these, these are these are maps, and they got another one on the next slide showing where these severe damage sites are. And I think the the take home is, is that primarily, it's a stretch between, you know, West Bend and about Highway eighteen, I guess Widmore area, that about, between West Bend and Widmore, that catches most of them. So obviously, the lower the lower end of the ditch is where some of the worst damage was done. And that happens to be again, where some of the sandier soils and more gravelly soils are located. So this is more towards the up upper end, and not showing the whole thing, but there's a few sites up here north of Highway eighteen. So then, yeah, I might sit down for this for a little bit, so I can see better. I don't know that I have anything specific to say about some of these, I just want, I thought it'd be beneficial for everyone to see some of the some of the damages we're talking about, it's easier to sit here, it's easy to sit here and just talk about it. But it's another thing, kind of, see what we're talking about. And you can see in some of these, I mean, the light, the light colored material where the banks are wrong and the road away. And these, these were pictures taken during, we did the drone flight in August. So that's, you know, a year, well, this, yeah, this is after this frame, so it's a year and a few months after, you know, the the original flooding that did most of the damage.
Colin, on these severe sites, do you have measurements across, like, from the channel to the bank of how far apart? Some of these are like probably five pictures back, there was a whole section that was very, yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that one, like, from water's edge on the left side to where the bank fell on the right side, is that? Do you have measurements on any of those things?
No, we really don't.
Okay, I was just curious.
Most of our measurements really were, you know, from how long, what what length is.
Length of the ditch?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
On stuff like that, where the banks are, you're going, you gotta break stuff in, or how do you?
Yeah, so there's, there's different ways to address that. I I think with, in some of these worst ones, we're, I don't think we're really going to be able to get around the fact that the the top of the channel is going to get a little wider. And so like, for example, if we were going to do riprap, we probably would, and it's hard, I don't know how to point stuff out, but at the very top, we'd probably pull some of that material off and pull some out of the bottom, and you don't want to use, just put slot back on the bank by any means. But you can put some drier material down, try to, try to rebuild that bank, and then put riprap on top of that. If you were just doing the bank shaping stuff, or hauling in material or anything, I'd have real big concerns about trying to put loose dirt in there, even if you could pack it and stuff. I I'd be afraid that the next flood would just wash it back away. So it is a challenge, once these, once these banks go, it's kind of like it's never going to be exactly the same as it was before, unfortunately.
Is there somebody in here that's got a band-aid?
No, but I can go get you one. I'll be right back.
So most of the comments that I heard way back when it was being done, and this would be come down to the last minute.
You're talking about the prior?
Original project, okay, is the insane steepness of the height of the ditch. And people were wondering, who in the world engineered this thing to have that steep of a slope and hope that it would ever hold? And it obviously didn't.
Yeah, so because I wasn't there, I, there's limited amount I can comment on there, but I guess a follow-up question I would have to that is, in the landowners and and maybe anybody in the rooms observation, did, were the banks less steeper than what they were before? Yeah, or beforehand? You're saying that they left them steeper than they?
Well, they dug out the bottom and they just pulled it up on the side, but they didn't, like in sixty-one, we widened that heifer out on top to where we maintained, even though we went deeper, we maintained a a slope that was way, I mean, if you just looked at the two, it was like you looked at Lots Creek and you thought, holy cow, how in the world is that going to hold up?
Yeah, I think sixty-one is two to one.
Yeah.
That was an improvement.
Right.
Yeah, and that is, we we also did something probably similar to what you're talking about, we did two to one slopes on another project in the north end of the county after it sustained significant damages, which luckily, those were eligible for FEMA funds, but a two to one side slope is definitely going to look different than a one and a half to one. um, which I believe is what we went to with the last project, and that was because that was a repair project, not an improvement project, so the scope of that was limited to restoring to original conditions. So that's, that's where that project would have been a little bit different.
But, but even then, even to repair that and to disturb that entire slope, unfortunately, we had some weather events that didn't allow us to get vegetation established while we're not building that slope.
Yeah. Yeah, that definitely didn't help. I mean, after that project, it was a drought, and then you get, you know, seven to ten inches of rain or whatever, real fast, and there wasn't a good vegetation establishment on those banks. But we're getting to the end of the pictures here, I, I just, I didn't wanna bore you with thousands of them, but I wanted to at least let people see what we're talking about here.
And actually that, well, both of those are kind of good examples of those places where there was riprap put in, even that didn't hold it.
And some of that, I think, I think there was probably riprap that whole stretch, you know?
Yeah, you can see it all, almost from the top of the screen to pat, well past the bottom. So that's a section where the soils just didn't support itself.
So how many of these areas that we're, we're looking at that are showing damage are actually peeling the floor?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, so, um, I guess a couple of comments about that. There's, these severe sites are kind of diff, and I didn't put pictures of the less severe stuff, but there's a, there's a lot more of the ditch that did just kind of, the bank slid down a little bit, and, and maybe there was just the vegetation on top, and so you have this clump, you have this clump at the toe, basically at the edge of the channel that just sat there. And so that, I mean, that's, that would be restricting the flow of water a little bit, because it took this material and then just piled it up kind of at the toe. But I didn't include any of that in the severe damages. Um, I think the, the bigger problem with these severe damages is if you leave them, um, they're just gonna continue to get worse. And where you, you, at some point, you gotta, you gotta put a stop to the additional damage, so with another, um, and we saw, even though, and I really don't know in twenty twenty-four if there was, if there was an event like the one in twenty twenty-three, where there was as much of hard rain in a short time that caused as much of a flush, I don't know. I know there was a lot of rain, um, but there was some additional, like some of those severe sites got worse, like they ate into the bank more. Um, and that's, that's part of the problem with trying to fix those, is we don't wanna just leave them and let them continue to get worse and worse. Um, those get worse and it can redirect the flow and push it against the other banks. It can get out of control really fast if you don't at least keep some handle, um, on the damages in the ditch.
Um, so forgive me if this question's been asked, but, uh, the, it was determined that when the job was done, the contractor did it according to the engineer's specs, or is that not a?
Yes, yep, that would have all been handled at or prior to the last completion hearing. Um, so if there was any, I guess objections or discrepancies?
Right, if I gotta grumble with that, shut up.
Yeah, I mean, not to be rude about it, but yeah, I mean, that, that project has been closed out. I mean, we, unfortunately, weather came after that, which I don't think any of us are happy about, of course. But, yeah, that, the engineers for the last project certified that it was done to their specifications, that they signed off on the completion, the board voted on it, we had our public hearings. That whole process was kind of
Right, fair enough.
Done and over with, yep. Uh, not a bad question, just, yep.
So what is the, you know, what is the reason you switched engineers then? I mean, now, now you got different engineers because?
Well, the engineer on that project retired anyway, so it was gonna be a different engineer regardless.
Okay.
Um, and just by conversations with landowners and decided to appoint, take it to muster guard on the project.
The damage to them pipes, is that from ice or machine damage?
Ice, ice.
Oh, I believe it's ice.
So there's some, there's some stuff, you know, I, I came in after that flood happened and there was a lot of damages. So even some things like the bank's steepness before it, you know, it washed it out, I didn't see it before, beforehand. I didn't see these pipes beforehand, but, and I don't have a map, I don't think, just showing where these pipe damages are, but they're kind of grouped in the pockets, like there's several of them in a small area, and then they're not damaged, and then they are. And I believe it was from, from ice, from the prior severe winter, and then when it was melting, it tried to move and, and smash some of these.
So to fix them, you, you just can cut off and leave them then?
Yeah, so there's quite a few, fortunately, because th, these pipes are not cheap. Um, but I feel that the ends could just be cut off. And that's how I have it in, in the reports. There's some that are beyond that, and we have to replace them, but as you can just, this is just a sampling on this slide. Um, most of these, you know, could just be cut off.
I mean, if you look at the bottom left-hand one, you're probably looking at six or eight inches of pipe. If that got shortened,
Yeah.
the impact is probably gonna be negligible.
Yeah.
But if you repair them and let them stick out six feet of the bank, it's gonna happen.
That's a big, right, that, yeah, that's, you saw that in some of those severe damage ones where it ate the bank way back, and now the pipe's really, if it's not already bent and wrecked, it's really vulnerable to.
And, and on, on another situation, kind of similar to this, we did, um, talk about cutting them back shorter in the bank, and even if we need to, having a little pocket of riprap right under it, so that where that water comes out is protected as a isolated area, but then it can flow into the channel as normal and not, not work its way back into the ditch and cause further damage. It, it's kind of isolated and protected that way. So I would, I would think we could do that, a some, similar process on whatever percentage of these that that would apply to.
So years ago, when I was a kid, we used to float them, sixty-one, there was always animal guards on the ends of these outlets. I don't see anybody putting those on, and we have trouble with them and everything else going up these pipes. Why are they not have something on the end?
Uh, yeah, again, I, I wasn't, me personally, I wasn't involved in that prior thing, but I know that can kind of vary by engineer and vary by county. It, it's, I believe Pocahontas County, um, a few years back, they required that when any tile outlets into drainage ditches were replaced, that an animal guard would be put on there. But kind of just, it just varies. Um, surface drains obviously don't need it, um, because it's not connected to tile, it's taking surface water, um, but.
But it's nice to have them on those too, so it's not going back up in there.
Well, the animal guards are just like, uh,
Right, but I mean a cap.
You're talking about a flap gate that holds.
I always felt like they strengthened the end of the pipe too, because they were in there, they were easily bolted in and actually gave the pipe structure at the end of the pipe.
Yeah, I, so those animal guards kind of vary, some of them, a lot of them that I've seen don't, aren't like in the pipe, kind of holding it, they're cut, they're attached to the top, and they're, you know, they're hidden, yeah. That way, if cornstalk or something did come down, it can actually get out of there, but
True.
Stuff can't get eaten. So, and then just kind of continuing through what was included in Amendment number two to the engineer's report, just a quick permitting update, because that is, you know, a factor in what we're looking at as far as doing repairs. Um, for the, and we'll get back to this, but in, we had talked about an option, and it's option number three, to flatten the banks for like the lower twenty miles into the ditch, so just take them back to two to one. And we were gonna need a permit from the Iowa DNR for that, and we, we have got that permit. So if it's decided to go that route, um, we've already got that taken care of, no permits required for the Army Corps for that option. Um, however, with any of these options, if we do more than two thousand feet of, of riprap, then we'll need an individual permit, and with the Army Corps, an individual permit to me is kind of like a swear word, because I don't, it, it's a pain to go through that process. There's, how it works with the Army Corps is there's, there's a lot of typical things that you can do that are covered under what are called like nationwide or regional permits. Um, as much as you can do that fall into those permits, it's kind of like they're streamlined, because a lot of people do those. It's, um, it's the same sort of process, and so they just have rules for how you do it, and that's it. Uh, an individual permit, you have to do, you know, alternatives analysis, you have to notify adjacent landowners. Um, and a, if, there's a lot more to it. It's not that you can't get that permit, but, um, it takes a minimum of six months to get, to get that permit. So depending on what option we go with, um, if, if we're anywhere near two thousand, we probably would try our best to keep it under two thousand, so we don't have to go through that individual permit process. Although it is, um, November, and if we had a decision on how to proceed, and six months, and we get, we apply for that permit, six months, if it, if it only, if it's only six months, if it says a minimum, um, you know, that puts us in the May timeframe, so maybe that'd be okay. But that's a, that's at least a consideration, um, as we're discussing how to proceed. And then we had a discussion at the last meeting about it, you know, the idea of trying to spread repairs out over time, like can we do fifty thousand this year and next year and a year after? And we talked a little bit about that, I, I, I thought more about it after the meeting, and I, I did include a discussion on that in, in that amendment two, number two. But I guess, well, first of, we did already talk about this, but first of all, the code, Iowa code doesn't really talk about, or it doesn't have any sort of process or procedures for, for doing that. It's more like if you need repairs, you need to do them, and here's, here's the process for how you pay for them, you know, and levying, doing warrants and stuff. And just want to remind everybody that for those, if it's over five hundred dollars for an in, individual parcel, you can pay those over time, so, you know, you could do it, depending on what the board sets up, you could pay it over ten years or up to twenty years. So that's sort of like do, you know, doing, paying for some every year, and then there's.
Except you got interest.
There is interest, however, the interest, it, it's not that far away from like inflation. So there is interest with it, but, so then, you're right, there is interest that comes along with, with paying that over time. Um, some other factors that make it less attractive in my mind are that it's kind of inefficient, because if you have, if you're gonna do fifty thousand and then you get some contractor to do it, and then are you doing a bid process or not? Uh, you know, if you do one big project, you can get several bids, hopefully a handful of bids, and there's a com, there's a competition for getting the lowest price. Um, if you do just spot repairs, not that some local contractor isn't fair, but at least they're gonna have to mold a lot and get their equipment there and take it away, um, every time there's a repair versus just taking the equipment there, doing the whole job, and then pull it off. So I just wanted to kind of speak to that a little bit more, um, so, okay. With Amendment two, I've got, so with the engineer's report and Amendment one, I had three options. And then in this Amendment two, I've got two more. So I apologize, there's a lot to, to consider and look at with that. Um, I think we'll get there, but on the back, very back page of the handout, not that this is some clear concise thing, but it's trying to look at the, the all options and the pros and cons to really help with trying to evaluate, you know, what might be the best, uh, option to pick. So these two additional options have to do only with the severe damage sites. Um, so if you look at, and we'll get to that too, but if you remember some of the other cost estimates, these, these up here, seven hundred and sixty thousand and five hundred and fifty-seven thousand are quite a bit lower in, in upfront costs than the other options. Um, I'd say that, you know, I'm not really recommending that, uh, skip into the end, but I'm not really recommending that one of these options be picked, but that doesn't mean that they can't be picked. They are, they can be done, and if they are, then we'll move forward that way. But I'd say these are like the bare minimum required, and that comes with the assumption that we're, we're addressing the highest priority sites, and some of these more minor damages or maybe moderate damages, um, we're kind of taking a wait and see approach. And so the hope is that, you know, those spots will get some grass growing and they'll hold. But I, I think with either of these two options, it comes along with you gotta pay close attention to the ditch, because there's a lot of damages out there that haven't, that, that aren't fixed, and we gotta watch what's, what's happening down the line as time goes by and, and fix stuff kind of on an as-needed basis moving forward. So it's, it looks like, oh, is it costs a lot less? But that's just, that's the upfront cost, and it's kind of unknown how much additional cost there'd be, like over the next five, ten years on addressing some of these other sites that maybe get worse and need, need attention. Um, the other concern that I have is that it, it's related to FEMA funding. So like, like this year, there was a disaster declared for Cassous County at the state level and at the federal level. So drainage ditches, if they have, you know, a bunch of damages from the twenty twenty-four flooding, would be eligible for FEMA funding. However, when, when FEMA looks at these projects for drainage ditches, they, they expect you to take care of your ditch, you know, yourself too. And so if we had all these damages and we just left a whole bunch of them, and then let's say a year from now or two years from now, we get a big flood and it, it does a lot of damages to the ditch, I'd have some concern on, you know, whether we're jeopardizing our ability to get, to, to secure future funding from FEMA in the, if we need. You know, if they say, no, you guys, there was damages that weren't FEMA eligible, and then you just. You know, if they say, no, you guys, there was damages that weren't FEMA eligible, and then you decided not to fix them, so now why should we? Why should we contribute? Anyway, that's just the, that's just a concern I have, um, that I wanted to put forward.
How much quicker could we address these problems, so? We're not possible. We're just.
I, so, yeah.
So we couldn't have addressed it any quicker.
What I'm talking about is related to the, so these are options, four A and four B, where we're only fixing the severe spots, we're leaving all the rest of them? And so that, that's my concern, is that they're saying, you left these damages alone, and you should repair them. So why should we, why should we contribute funding for a future disaster if you're not taking care of your own ditch? I don't know what the answer would be, it's just a, it's just a concern. Because with, with these options, basically, there's, there's damages out there, and we just leave. And with the hopes that they would kind of heal themselves and, and hold.
Looking back at what the, the, where we could have, and when, when a major part of this stuff happened, we could have applied for damages then, but we just didn't realize we could have, was there, did I hear something about that at the last meeting?
You're talking.
When the original, twenty twenty-three? I thought there was something about.
No, so the, the reason that's not eligible is because there wasn't a federal disaster declaration.
You could have applied for one though, at that time, saying.
No.
I mean, first, first the state has to declare a disaster for the county, and then the, then the feds, you know, the president has to after that. And I'm not really sure of the process of.
We weren't given an actual disaster.
I don't, I don't think they had any even close.
It was so isolated, and I know, I had even called a couple people at that time, and it didn't get anywhere, you just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because at that time, we were, I guess, the time this damage would have happened, we were actively dealing with repairing other things that were FEMA eligible from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So I mean, we, it was definitely on our radar, I would say, as a board, but it didn't, the actual damage that was incurred on a statewide and national perspective wasn't to the magnitude that they actually would have done a disaster declaration. So it wasn't, it wasn't eligible because those criteria were not met.
I have a question.
Yeah.
About when you started bringing that all down, all you said, oh, that excess gravel and stuff would be there, can you even do it?
What, what do you mean, move it? Move it from where?
Well, instead of taking up more property, can I just load it up in a wagon or a truck and get it out of there?
You're saying removing the spoil if we flatten the banks out?
Mm-hmm. Instead of using up more property with the, with the gravel, just get it out of there.
You should know a lot better than that, Kyle.
Removing the spoil, removing the spoil can be done, but if you're including that in a project here, it would add expense.
No, I'm not talking about you doing it, I.
Oh, yeah, we have allowed that as a.
That's hilarious, no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think if we were, particularly if the, if the landowner was gonna haul that away, what I would probably do is talk to the, talk to the contractor. You know, you wouldn't want him to spread it out. Just leave it in a pile, so it's easier for you to take out, you know, and don't, don't spread.
Yeah. For loading, yeah, if, if they did, yeah, if they did their excavation and left a windrow there, it would be easy to load up.
Yeah, so that's where, you know, you talk to the, the contractors, and we have, we're gonna load it up and, um, take it away. Now, I, I will say, as far as spoils and stuff, we still do like a little bit of a high spot before you get to the ditch, because we don't want water just flowing over the bank, because that'll cause, that'll cause problems. Um, and since we were talking about the funding thing, I kind of skipped to this funding slide. Um, we really, we contacted a lot of different people and agencies and to try to find funding for this. And basically, unfortunately, it was all dead ends. They, they came back and said there was just, there's really not funding available for that sort of thing. Um, and like, we already talked about for the twenty twenty-three damages, not, not eligible for FEMA funding. But just at the bottom there, you see the list, we talked to the NRCS, uh, Iowa Drainage District Association, Iowa Homeland Security, who deals with FEMA, um, with Marjero and Senator's Office. Uh, okay. So these are the options, um.
Mike, did you have questions?
Uh, yeah, the thought, not relevant here, but. Depending what option we go with, you're gonna use a major bank reconstructing again. And what is, what is Humboldt County doing to make sure they're not? I realize there's a lot of different factors here that, you know, that wouldn't have made any difference, you know, with the heavy rains and the stuff and that. What, what about the outlet of the drainage district? What are they doing to not impede our water getting to the outlet? I mean, I don't know. Just, just, you know, I know it was kind of mentioned the last time around, but when, once it leaves Cassous County, it goes to Humboldt County. It need, need it all replaced, go down a little more, you know, it's nothing, are we sure that there's nothing on there and that they need to do to help alleviate some of our problems here? We can, I'm just, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, that, that stuff is more related to flow and, and, you know, getting the water away quicker and not packing up water. And that's, that's really not, that, I don't wanna say it's not related, I mean, it's, that's part of a drainage district, you're trying to drain the water. But with this, that's not really related. Now, I don't, I don't know for certain, in Humboldt County, is there a drainage district? It just goes to natural.
Goes to natural flow.
I don't know, they should call a creek.
Yeah, so that.
It turns into a natural creek, and then it flows into the river.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's in a natural creek in Humboldt, then they wouldn't be able to do anything. They wouldn't have the authority of the code of Iowa that we have for drainage district laws.
But you don't know how much fall there is or how flat it is. Will we get out of here, that's what they're asking.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, because be just curious, they, we got, got some repairs to do, obviously, but somebody should maybe dead, maybe check in on, once he, is there anything that, like, I, this is causing, not necessarily this problem, but is there anything that on their end that they need to pick up the ball on, just to.
If it's not in a drainage district, Humboldt County, you know, really wouldn't have any issues with that. If, if there was anything that was gonna happen, like if there's an obstruction or there's a restriction downstream from a drains district, the Iowa code does allow you to go down further to try to alleviate that, um, restriction now. Kyle made a good point that when you start doing that in a natural stream, we talked about permitting, so, you know, there's a lot of things where drainage ditches, you're allowed to, to do them, because it's a design, um.
Facility.
Facility that was created and paid for a hundred years ago, and so you're, we're kind of exempt from a lot of things, because we're just putting it back to the way that it was intended to be. So I don't know if you wanna call it grandfathered or whatever, but there's a lot of rules about digging and straightening natural streams that in drainage districts and drainage ditches, we don't have to follow those. But as soon as you get outside of it, um, boy, the permitting gets, gets pretty wild. But that's something, you know, that could be looked at, it's not something that's, like, I was hired to look at the damages and, and recommend, you know, what to do for repairs. So I, that's kind of outside the scope of what I've looked at so far. Um, so, okay, different options. At, at dawn, it's good just to look at the dollars here. So option one is, you know, we've got primary bank repair method. So kind of options one, two, and three are, are more or less, you could call them complete repairs. Um, I'm not saying every little damage we included in those. I think we talked about that in July, that there's some quite minor stuff that I said, nah, let's, let's leave that, that I think it'll be okay. But basically, anything moderate or severe is included there. So options one through three are more repairing, everything that needs to be repaired. Four and four, four A and four B are only this, the most severe, high priority sites. Um, all of these basically are, include the pipe repairs. Um, and really the biggest thing is, well, okay, option one is the riprap for most things. Option two has riprap, but it also has a lot of bank shaving, where you just, where, where the, only where the bank is wrecked, you just pull the bank back and try to shape it back in that spot, and that hole, and, and instead of riprap, where, where, where you can. So that's quite a bit cheaper than option one. Option three.
Is there seeding on that second one?
Yeah. Yep. There'd be seeding based on all. Um.
And actually, that, I mean, we could talk about that now or anytime really, but the seeding aspect on DD four, we even went to hydro seeding on that.
Yeah.
With the drought conditions, it, it worked in some places, but in general, it was not what I would have expected. But then we came back later with, um, aerial seeding. We had styers fly on seed, was actually substantially lower than conventional seeding or, um, hydro seeding or any of the options we looked at. And I would say that had the best results out of everything we tried. So that's something I would recommend if we do a ditch project, I would, I would do aerial seeding, probably exclusively. Um, because for what we spent, um, aerial seeding ten to fifteen miles of DD four, we've paid more than that for a fraction of the territory for contractors to throw seed out by hand or with the spinner or whatever. I mean, it was, it was not even comparable cost wise.
Did they use an airplane or they?
Yeah, airplane, yep.
Why are they after it? You've paid the biggest part of that.
It, it is a lo, it is a large factor, but the advantage, one of the advantages I saw with that was, so I was directly dealing with styers, I mean, granted, you gotta get a little lucky too, but we could pick the forecast, we could say, hey, there's a chance of rain on Thursday, let's kind of get ready, and then we get close and say, okay, reasonable certainty, it's gonna be kind of the conditions we want, and you say go, and it's done in two hours for ten miles. Um, so.
Are you talking about this original project?
No, no, I'm.
We did meet with you and had styers come in, give us a bid and doing that, and I've never heard of anything you ever got done with that.
It, it didn't, um, but I'm talking about a project up kind of bankrupt to Sway City area. Um, and that's in my district, um, so I handled that directly. But that was, that was flown on with an airplane, and yeah, we kind of watched the weather, kind of had a tentative plan. The morning of, I said, let's go, they load it up, and I mean, when you're flying it on with a plane, it goes pretty quick. So we watched in the beginning, we started trying to just fly down the middle and let it spread out to the sides. I wasn't real impressed with the results there, you could see a lot in the actual water channel, but we got some on the sides, I just wasn't impressed with it. So then we ended up splitting it and flying both banks and offsetting that, so that the seed came down and actually targeted each bank separately. We cut it right back and split applied it, and in general, um, we got pretty good establishment out of that. Some places better than others with the soil conditions, but in general, I was really impressed with that, especially for the price we paid. Because, I wanna say off the top of my head, it was twenty thousand for twenty, twenty-five thousand for ten to fifteen miles. Um, so cost was really efficient there. But that, that was something I've, I've said a couple times here, for sure, I know, but I mean, I would heavily look at airplane seeding.
Yeah, I, I think especially if we were doing option number three, which is basically the lower twenty miles, pulling back the slopes on both sides that whole way. So basically, the banks would be raw, you know, that they'd be getting pulled back to a way flatter, um, slope. And so then, that, that whole raw bank would be seeded. If we're doing site, sites, that kind of depends.
I would, I mean, I would still, seeding aspect, I would still stick with that, because they can open and close a gate like that when they're in the plane. So I mean, you start a little early, you end a little late, you might waste a little seed that way, but it's still probably gonna be the most efficient, and I would heavily argue probably the best product if it's timed right.
Yeah, and the seeding stuff is al, has always kind of been a bit of a crapshoot, and I know in years past, for a long time, they never even, when they did clean out, they didn't even seed it after. Uh, they just let it reestablish on its own. Um, yeah, so then that's the option three, which two and a half million. Uh, and then these, only looking at the severe sites are obviously significantly less. Um.
On the original, when they did the original clean out, did they, they do a hundred percent of the correct, and they went and they dug out a hundred percent all the way along?
That's my understanding of that.
And now on option one, two, and three, are they, are they doing like what percent, are they doing?
Yeah, we're just, we're fixing the spots that are damaged. It's not like we're doing, um, another clean out or something.
You, you mentioned something about, uh, the twenty mile, uh, couple of.
Yeah, option three would be more of a complete clean out on the lower twenty miles, you're talking.
And that's.
You started.
County line then and come north, or what? That's, there's the map of what we, if we were doing option number three, the red is where we would be flattening the banks out. Um.
Red, orange-ish.
Red or orange, yeah.
Orange.
Or.
Yeah, I would say orange.
I can get a blue line, I got two red ones.
Yeah, so I, I mean, in general, I would say that's probably your lower half to lower two thirds.
Yeah.
Roughly.
In other words, we just finally got our seeding back, you're gonna come through and fuck it up again. Took three years to get it seeded again, to get it to grow. Because I'm a mile from the Humboldt County line.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the, the thought is on this is that sort of a project is more of a long-term solution. So if the banks are steep and there's a lot of gravel and stuff in them, uh, and they're not holding up, sloping it back is gonna be, you know, more of a long, it's, it's forward looking. So yes, it would, it would lay the bank spare again, and we'd have to reseed them.
But then you reseed them, you didn't do it the last time?
We did it ourselves.
Yeah, well, that came out of our pocket directly, because I rented a drill from Tom Mason to put it on my tractor, and I spent a day and a half out there seeding those creek banks.
But you're, are you talking the outside of the ditch or the inside?
You didn't seed anything on the inside. We did really well, I sprayed them for how many years?
Yeah. So that, that project, the contractor was responsible for seeding. Um, the drought, it didn't establish very good in a lot of places.
Some places, you never even cleaned up the rock.
Well, that goes back to the comment.
What do you mean? No, you can't, a half inch won't cover a rock that size. No, you can't, a half inch won't cover a rock that size. Put a few in there.
On where you're doing the bank shaving, you put the spoil up, there's a fair amount of this, it's got filter strips already established.
Yeah.
Does that less desirable dirt you're putting on there affect any filter strip payment?
Yeah, so, that's a, that's a good question. And there's another discussion connected with that, that we also need to have with any of these. But basically, we want to talk with, with the R C S or whoever the program is with. And just for example, in, in Palo Alto County, there's a drainage district sixty-one, and there was a ditch improvement that was done there. So, it was widened out and then two to one, so the ditch was gotten wider and there was stuff in the program there. My understanding, and actually, I think I talked with Brian, that's been a while ago, but there would potentially be an adjustment, you know, where if there's less acres that are actually in that program, they would make an adjustment to payment.
So, they can adjust the acre, but I'm, would they adjust the payment rate? Because that's based on soil.
They don't, I mean, I can't speak in the future, but in sixty-one, it, they, they were very good to work with. Then they gave us the option to either, what did we lose, three feet or six feet or something? On each side, on the tops?
Yeah.
And they, we could slide another three feet into the field if we wanted to and just leave the contract the same, or they would take off that portion of the contract. But they were very, very good to work with. They didn't give us any grief at all.
Yeah.
Didn't change anything.
Well, I think they go back to the original soil samples that were taken years ago.
Right.
And they use that, and your rate is based off the soil sample. If you're putting crap dirt back on top.
But is it, but is it soil samples or soil type?
Soil type, I believe.
And your soil type, they should not change that.
They ain't gonna change that.
For the sand on top, you don't change.
The soil type, the original soil type's gonna stay the same. I don't, I don't see them changing that.
Yeah, and I think that's a great example because to my knowledge, it, the explanation I've been told is they, they have accurate measurements, like from satellite and their maps. Their measurements are accurate, but the relative location of them in, involves human error, so to speak, because you're clicking on a map. So, yeah, it could be shifted out or you could adjust your acres to account to how many acres are still in that contract. But I haven't had anyone that's really told me they had any issues with any of that, any of these other projects.
Well, one of your problems is you go to two to one bank shaping on some of that ground, but the bank is quite deep. You're gonna end up putting spoil out past the right of way of the drainage district. So, you're gonna damage crop ground with spoils that are conducive to growing corn and beans. You have to take that into consideration. You're gonna damage some crop ground.
Yeah, and, and for that sort of thing, you know, there's different ways of handling it. I mean, if you, you can acquire more right of way, or you can make, you know, the right of way thing is kind of like a damage payment anyways, and you can do, you can just do a damage payment. For those cases. I, I think, and as far as the buffer strips go, you know, what you're talking about, I think it's not, it's not a concern of mine. The bigger, the bigger thing is the nesting season. When you've got these buffer strips along the ditch, they, as part of that contract, disturbance is not allowed during the nesting season, May fifteenth to August first. That's prime ditch work season.
What they did in four seven sixty-one, Chris, we were digging right all through summer.
So.
Yeah, they did.
They did?
No, they don't.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, I never called in grief from N R C S.
They changed the process.
Okay.
So, it, it used to be that you just needed to request from the county committee waiver.
Sure.
And they could just do that, county level. Well, now they changed things and you have to get approval from the state technical community. And that, you know, they meet about every three months, so it's less often. And it's the state, not county people. Probably the bigger, even bigger concern than that for me is this, they tapped on an environmental review. So, basically, before they would allow that to happen, they would do an environmental review and they could theoretically reject that waiver. I'm trying, I'm trying to work with, work with the people that change this and explain the situation. We need to be able to get in there. Because the drainage district, it's not the drainage district's buffer strip, it's the drainage district's right of way. And the drainage district has the ability to go in there regardless of the nesting season restriction. But that puts the landowners in possible trouble, you know, with the U S D A. And we don't want to inadvertently do that, but I, I don't want to get too much into detail on this, but there was an issue with the same thing about ten to fifteen years ago where they put a waiver process in place. And what had to happen is it had to threaten to the drainage districts to just not allow buffer strips. Because we can, we need to get in there to be able to do repairs. But that, that sort of was the leverage to get the prior process in place, but it changed in twenty twenty-three. Okay.
On sixty-one, we were on a timeline where our permit was gonna expire. I don't know, Carmen, did we, we didn't get any special permit for that, did we?
I don't remember.
I don't, I don't remember. That would get rejected, right? They were digging.
Do it, ask questions later. We give the bank the needle under there.
So, okay. I guess. What I'll say is that we've got these different options and, you know, to me, option number three, yes, two point five million dollars, but I feel like that's the best long-term dollar for dollar value for the district. So, that's what we're recommending. But then also just a smaller thing that those trees get sprayed and killed. I guess if we're flattening it back, we'd be digging a lot of problems.
Maybe on the.
Yeah.
It'll get sprayed unless you do a bank shaping.
Yeah, if we do another project that moves dirt, they'll get disturbed by that excavation process most likely, but also then we'll follow up with spraying.
Other than that, there is, did they have trees on it beforehand?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's.
Trees, trees in the channel are bad. Maybe you could say, well, they're holding the bank together, but they're restricted flow. Trees can, there's pluses and minuses, I guess. But more, for a drainage ditch, they cause some problems and then they get in the way of being able to make repairs. So, it may be hard to deal with if they're gonna get, because that's just key. Okay, at this point, I guess we can discuss the different options. We can go through objections.
I, I think you should, I think my suggestion is you, people are gonna be leaving here. You should have a hand vote or something what they're thinking.
I think three is a good idea. Number three.
You know, I, I, people are gonna be leaving here, you, you've had three or four leave already. I don't know, maybe you need to read the objections first, I don't know.
How many, Colin, how many?
If everybody's gonna be leaving, you, you, you're not gonna have an opinion from.
Colin, could you, you have an average cost per acre? Could you get a range with an idol or how, how it would be spread out a little more?
Um, I could get that, I have wire. I don't have that.
So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking to reclassification on this, right? So, the, the simple answer to your question is if you'd like to know what you would be paying, Marge can run a test bill. That's just a example or sample. We could do ten thousand dollars and you could do the math. Or we could plug in two point five million across the district and you can actually see what you would pay because that classification schedule is not going to change with this project. So, we could get relatively close figures for your individual parcels at the auditor's office after this hearing.
Some people will be paying double. What do you have there?
Uh, pretty typically, that does happen with classifications. You know, we could range half to double the average. Plus or minus. I haven't, I haven't specifically looked in detail at how they exist in the schedule for making a difference in this district.
I, I'd like to just have the suggestion from the audience, you paid a whole bunch of money to have that before. And now, if we just fix the severe sites, isn't a problem. You're gonna have more going down the road that you're gonna have to fix, but you're not gonna have a big cost next year.
That's what we need to know.
Yeah, I need to know that because I supervise with you. You spent a lot of money already, so.
Well, and maybe, maybe to that aspect, I mean, if we've got, if we do a show of hands of the first three options are more complete repairs, the last two are severe and partial repairs. So, everyone, everyone who would like just.
I just have one question. I know it's, now is not a great time to ask if I would spend any money on anything. But I know for my sake of sixty-one, it was painful to, to write down the check to get it done. But once you had it done right, the pain ended versus doing it half faith and you're cussing it every year for the next ten years because it's never been done right.
It was supposed to have been done right for a year.
I agree, but I don't, I, I do not deny that at all, but I don't know what to do about that at this point. So, I, that, I agree totally.
So, there is a difference this time, make sure that we do it from two to one slope.
Different, different, different slope, yeah. Did you have something?
So, the, well, I, I can't, I didn't say this to him, but I was gonna ask Linus and Keith and you guys, is option three, what you think is the most parallel to sixty-one? Because I gave you guys plenty of grief on sixty-one, but I think sixty-one in the end was done right. So, I agree with that statement, not because Chuck is my dad, but just.
Well, if you, so I don't, obviously, I don't know sixty-one, but I do know DD four, we went to two to one slope. So, if you guys went to two to one slopes, that would be apples to apples for Kasuth versus Palo Alto. And I mean, I've seen a big difference in the project that was done on DD four versus the project on PAC one. It's night and day difference. And if you look at the rains that were sustained, I mean, DD four got filled up similar time PAC one did when all these damages were sustained. And four doesn't have anything comparable to this for damage. I, I'm not aware of anything new that was damaged from that rain event.
The difference though, Kyle, is DD four's got good black dirt and clay. You have a lot of sand and gravel on the bottom end of this one. If you go to a two to one slope, you're still gonna have issues.
I, I think some places you're gonna need three to one because the bank's eaten out so far that your two to one's already gone. And I think that's some things we have talked about before. I mean, Colin, I don't know if you have any.
Are they gonna do that because they see that now?
Well.
They're gonna go to three to one or they're gonna?
That's.
Colin, that, yeah. You're gonna be way out in your guidance fields and I'm not really in favor of buying a bunch of right of way.
Right, that's the balance, that's the balance here. And I've got a slide here just talking about bank slopes. At the bottom, so there's a Iowa drainage guide that Iowa State University puts together and they talk about for a drainage ditch, you know, what, what slope to put on the banks. And you can see at the very bottom there for this sand, they recommend three to one.
So, is this a very recent guideline that wasn't available when we first did the ditch, three years ago?
No, it's been out there, it's been out there for a while.
We were digging in sand and cement, but we thought one of the other ones was good.
One of the issues with these, with these dishes, you can see the original, originally, they dug it at one to one. And that's very common. A hundred years ago, they dug them all about like that. And blue clay and stuff, it's probably holding right in there still. But a lot of them, even this ditch, had already, it wasn't holding a one to one for a hundred years. It had naturally, it robed some down and it robed a little bit flatter. But the, I think the balancing act is, is what Roger was talking about is, yeah, if, if it doesn't involve taking land away and, and putting it into the channel, you know, it's an overage. But the, the flatter the bank slopes you go, the more, the more land that's being lost to the channel. So, I, I think with the two to one, you know, there's, there's places probably, if there's, there's probably already places that are two to one now.
Some past it probably.
Some of it's been damaged, this two to one right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, damaged.
Right.
So, that's, that's my point, you're not gonna hold gravel and sand.
Well, you said in, when you did the FEMA thing, there are a lot of areas that did not show any additional damages from everything this year. Why would we want to distribute any of that?
Exactly. Yeah. It's a, it's a fair question.
Why spend more money for it?
It's a question in my mind. I think the uncertainty that I have is, you know, the severity of the event in twenty twenty-three, did we equal that in twenty twenty-four? I know we had a lot of rain, but did you ever get in a short amount of time that caused that sort of a flusher? I don't know the answer to that.
Yes. Yeah.
We did. So, you'd say that there was an equivalent flood through the ditch in twenty twenty-three?
Pictures, that picture before the bent up culverts? It was like the last picture of the creek that you actually had.
Up here?
No.
Right before you checked the culvert.
Right before your culverts. I, you went past it probably.
Very, yeah, the very last one before he hit all those bent up culverts.
You're about to.
Yeah, you're, you're going the wrong way, you're too far there. Keep going till you hit the culverts and then go back one.
Oh, they move along the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you went past it right away.
Well, anyways, it was Doug seeing it. It's, it was all rip wrapped down.
Right there.
There you go.
This one? Yep.
So, you can see what's left of the rip wrap. And you go north of this, just not even quarter mile, it was over the road twice. So, it was, it was, I got pictures on the phone, it was definitely as bad as twenty-three.
Is that your mailbox again?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's saying prayers.
She can try to manage the wire as much as she can, but she's gonna do exactly what she wants to do.
There's truth to that. So, I guess if there was, there was a flood in, of the level of twenty twenty-three and it didn't, you know, blow it twice as bad, that's, I think that's good news.
Be a reason to consider what we've done.
And I don't think we can leave it, we, we can't just leave the ditch alone, period. But fair point about, okay, sloping it back, is it, is it worthwhile? Well.
Depends on who's writing the check out.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to, you don't write the check out, we do.
Well, I don't, yeah, and I'm not, I don't have a dog in the fight, you're right.
You don't.
I'm trying to.
Those of us who live on a creek, we get the blood and the burden here. Those of us who have land on the creek, and we're the ones who take the things, yeah.
Well, and, yeah, I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm not. Yeah, well, and, yeah, I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm not, I'm not trying to shove any particular option down anybody's throat. I'm recommending option number three. That's what's in the report. But that doesn't mean that that's the option that has to be picked. I, I mean, it's, it's your guys' drainage district. It's your guys' decision.
I can give a recommendation. The way you go, do fix the bad, bad spots, not spend one or two point five million and do this whole frigging thing all over again. And because some of us are looking at thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars is what it's gonna cost. And that's huge. And we just got done doing that on the last project and it gets a little old. So, I think going with, uh, four A is the most cost-effective way. See what happens. It may not be the best thing, but see what happens.
As long as, as long as people understand that point that we're just handling the worst of the worst.
Yeah, there could be, there could be more.
Yeah, I don't know. Potentially.
Yeah, yeah.
So, to get it, we need to, need to have some sort of direction today on where we wanna go. So, so let's, what Kyle was saying here, let's start with a show of hands, how many wanna do a partial versus a complete option to the project. I think would be the best place to, to go there.
Yep.
For starters here. So, um, show, show of hands.
So that.
That would be, yeah, option one, two, and three would be a complete, um, restoration, if you wanna call it that, um, repair. And then option four A and four B would be the partial. So, considering those two options to begin with here, um, show of hands, how many would like to go with a complete repair to the ditch? Okay, and then show of hands then for partial. Okay, so then between option four A and four B, show of hands for what, if we'd like to do option four A or prefer that. Okay, who we got here? Can you see everybody? Okay, we have one over there.
Put your hands up high.
So, we can see them.
Yeah, well, I mean, but that is the more expensive of the two options for.
I, I think you're better off getting that one because you've got grass.
Well, I think based on that, fair to say that we're gonna pursue.
No, we have to vote, but the majority.
We, we have a consensus. I pursue from this consensus that option four A is the most popular option here with the landowners.
People are getting tired of hearing us. I would make a motion to proceed with option four A.
Then we have to close.
We gotta close.
Well, I, I think you need to read things first.
We do need to read objections.
Read the objections.
We do need to, you're right, yep.
So, I, and a question I have, we've got the whole list of objections from the July meeting. And this is a new hearing, but I would assume that, and we didn't take action on any of those. I assume they all need to be read again.
Yep, sure we do.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a bit.
But you, you read that law in the last one.
Um, there's new ones. There's a few new ones.
Did we hear them?
Just reading. And some of them are from the same people who submitted a new one.
The objections are all to doing a complete clean out, clean out?
Uh, there's a variety of things that are covered.
And I don't, I mean, just to hit our legal basis, I, I don't, I don't know if we can skip them or not.
If they're not gonna do a complete, if they're all for not to do a complete rebuild, you could skip them, could not do a complete.
It's probably best to cover our legal basis.
Yeah.
Right. I'll let you know if it's a new one or a old one. And I'll try to read it fairly quickly. Uh, the first one.
I don't think we can skip them. It's a whole new hearing. We didn't continue the hearing.
From the July, it was submitted for the July one. It says by Walter M. Radley and Miguel Carlin. Uh, it says petition for damage repair and repair solutions for hearing on joint drainage district number one. Main Elton, Dithuth County, D twenty and B sixty-three intersection. Number one, second request for damages done by this project. First request with April nineteen, twenty twenty. Two, there is a major flaw in building the ditch height located approximately two hundred feet east of the bridge on P twenty. See photo number one. The ditch height is too low. When the ditch fills to capacity, it overflows onto my field, bringing debris such as trees, limbs, piles of torn cobs, and garbage for miles to the north. The ditch height needs to be brought up to the height of selected fields. Um, result for workmanship of contractor of this project. Number three, four thirty-inch diameter steel culverts need to be removed. They bring ditch water onto my field every year when ditch is even half full, floods the bottom of the field with the ditch water. They were meant to take water out of the field, but they do just the opposite. This field never flooded before this project. Four thirty-inch culverts for an eighty acre field is excessive. They cannot be seen and are dangerous. They don't work. See photo two, three, and four. Number four, I have already paid for this project. I have posed twice now. The last assessment, twenty twenty-two, I paid twelve hundred and seventy dollars extra on my taxes for this project. I do not intend to pay now to repair the poor workmanship and poor design of this project. This project has never benefited me and has only caused me damage and additional expense. I'm not the only landowner along this ditch that was opposed to this project. And I am not the only one who is unhappy with the results of this extra expense needed to fix it. The cost to make this right should be buried by those responsible for the work, the contractors and those responsible for its inception, Kasuth and Palo Alto County and the people that brought it about. Um, so I've talked with Walter and basically what he's talking about, for one thing, is that there's a low spot in the spoils. So, then when the water comes up, he believes that that's causing it to flood out. And then he's got land next to the ditch that's pretty low lying and then it floods into there. Um, the, the culverts, those culverts were in there before the prior repair project. Um, I haven't looked at it a lot. I can look at it more if the board wants, wants me to. Um, four thirty-inch surface drains and it's more than just that eighty acre field, but it's only a hundred and some acres, but that does seem like a lot. Um, but those were in there prior to this last repair project. I can see them, um, with old air. Uh, I guess that, that's kind of the comments on that one. Okay, next. Richie Tilges, and this was for the July.
Is he here?
Meeting?
No.
Okay.
If or when damages corrected, please consider flattening the slope banks so they are not so steep in angling the tile outlets down and with the flow of water. Banks that are too steep fall down and slough into the drainage when wet and with, when wet and heavy with snow. Tile outlets that are very long and hang straight out over the dredge are broken by water flow and heavy snow. A request for repairs form has been filled out in Kasuth County for damage on, on our property. Enclose our photos of a sinkhole washout that has taken a large chunk of, of CRP ground next to the dredge, sloughing of a dredge bank and destroyed pile outlet right by the bridge on County Road B nineteen. Um, we paid a large sum of money just a couple of years ago to maintain this dredge and I'm not happy to pay it again so soon. Please be conservative with tax money and if repairs are made, make sure they're done correctly. Um, the pipe is on our list that he was talking about. And the sinkhole washout stuff, the pictures, I'm not sure exactly where, location lies exactly where they're at. But I will say that none of those are on our severe damage sites list.
That first page you read too, with eighty on it, the first, you know, evade those?
I'd recommend that, you know, it's not a huge deal to add some dirt to the spoil there. That, that would solve that part. The, the, the surface drain part is not.
Yeah.
Um. Greg Tilges. My name is Greg Tilges. I'm from Fenton, Iowa. Uh, I'm a landowner in District One of Kasuth and Palo Alto Counties. I'm writing to object to this drainage ditch repair. We just paid to have the ditch cleaned out two years ago. I understand that repairs need to be done, but the engineer contracted and did the work the first time should be held accountable. The supervisors need to be held accountable also. Tax and spend is all they do. These engineers come up with these high fare amounts, so they make more. The supervisors need to think about the tax payers. Terry Meyer, this is from July. I'm requesting that my opposition statement below be read at your next meeting, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, where the main ditch repairs related to drains district number one, Kasuth and Palo Alto County will be discussed and determined. I am in strong opposition to the proposed open ditch repairs in Kasuth County District number one, repairs in Kasuth and Palo Alto Counties. My question is the ditch determination due to farming activity. It is my opinion that the landowners farming directly to the bank repairs be held to pay the majority of the open ditch repair costs. In summary, I strongly oppose the proposed bank repairs in Drainage District number one, Kasuth and Palo Alto County. Um, I guess the only comment there is that, you know, I don't think we can charge anybody anymore for farming up to the edge of the ditch. And I don't really think that property contributed to most cases to the damages. Um, Deborah Meyer, July. I'm requesting that my opposition statement below be read at your next meeting, where the main ditch repairs related to drainage district number one, Kasuth and Palo Alto County will be discussed and decided. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed for the main open ditch in Drainage District number one, Kasuth and Palo Alto County. My question is, have you checked into FEMA funds and would this project qualify for funds? It appears this project would qualify for FEMA funds. FEMA fund would significantly reduce the taxpayer cost to fifteen percent of the cost of the open ditch repairs. As a landowner in District number one, the actual cost of all three repair proposals needs to be determined and addressed prior to determination. Please consider my strong objection to the proposed repairs and ditch payment repairs. If the decision to move forward with the ditch repairs is determined, it would be my suggestion that the least cost option made for repairs is utilized in your decision and the landowners directly next to the open ditch pay the majority of the cost of repairs. In summary, I strongly oppose the proposed bank repairs in Drainage District number one, Kasuth and Palo Alto County. Deborah Meyer. Uh, Art and Yula Mogan. We do not object, this was in July, we do not object what is proposed as we need to keep the drainage ditch working. Our concern is the trees are coming back. We were told they would be taken care of. Three years we waited, nothing has been done to stop their growth. Why? We are holding a check that has not been okayed cash. I assume that last part is some warrant for damages. So, when the money comes in, then they can get that warrant. And that's, I looked, that's in the area of Whittmore, the same place that I was talking about, but.
Their field is right across from mine.
Uh, Anne, I don't know how to pronounce that, Shetter, like to the T. Tilges Farm Landowner. Uh, I object to the joint drainage, this was July as well. I object to the joint drainage district number one, proposed main ditch repairs in Kasuth and Palo Alto Counties. Major repairs were made in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one, sorry, which was a significant expense to the landowners. The problems occurring now are a result of the engineering mistakes that were made. Examples include the ditches were dug too deep, causing erosion. The use of small riprap instead of large riprap resulted in collapse. The destruction of vegetation that lined the drainage ditch caused natural erosion. Broken pipes because of the poor quality of placement and the ineffective structure of rock shoes. To me, landowners should not have to pay for these engineering mistakes made by Corin Jergens Construction LLC. Do we have drone images of the work that is completed and approved in April twenty twenty-two? Who approved this work? Does a third-party engineering firm review the situation? I appreciate that you have reached out to agencies to help aid this project. How likely is this to happen? Will you use disaster relief funds to help? I think it is completely unreasonable to expect landowners to pay this amount every other year. I own a small share of my family farm and this takes almost half the profit. I also pay taxes on the land in both counties. A portion of our tax money should be set aside for these hikes of price. My family members and I have observed this drainage system for over fifty years and the best solution is to let it be in its natural state. My other suggestion is to fix five problems slash complaints that were in the report. As a board of supervisors, you need to act and provide a reasonable state of repair and keep your landowners' best interests in mind. Michael Tilges, July. I am objecting in writing regarding the recent notice of public hearing document titled Joint Drainage District number one, Main Open Ditch Repairs Kasuth and Palo Alto County, Iowa, post date July third, twenty twenty-four. Please file my objection with Kasuth and Palo Alto County auditors. I am concerned that the damages to the main, main drainage ditch number one may be due to more than just natural causes. The previous company in completing the drainage repairs work in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one took no action to mitigate leaving the banks of the ditch bare vegetation. Installed surface pipes and tile that malfunctioned under predictable weather conditions, weather conditions that occurred in the past in Iowa, and put in place riprap that did not perform as intended. That company, in my opinion, is responsible for a portion of these new repairs. Additionally, I am objecting to this work until efforts to secure other funding sources are determined and procured. Rosemary Lades.
Bob's, sorry.
Uh, this was July. We are in receipt of the notice of public hearing, Joint Drainage District number one, Main Open Ditch Repairs Kasuth and Palo Alto County, Iowa letter, postmark June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. When is enough enough? We firmly and absolutely object to any and all proposed repairs on main contentions. The exorbitant, number one, the exorbitant amount of money that we had to pay for the previous failed repairs in the same area, which we believe the previous engineering firm and previous repair companies and those involved should be held accountable slash liable for. We were made aware that the person, the person's farming and profiting from the land in question does not pay tax. We were made aware that the person, the person's farming and profiting from the land in question does not pay taxes on that land. It looks from the photos that the land beside the bank has been left idle for quite some time with the tall brush slash weeds, et cetera, that have grown in. So why the need for any repairs at all for that area? If the objections you have been getting and will receive or not heard and you proceed, we, as taxpayers, demand that the money that we have paid on this prior failed repair project be considered already as paid. And another one from the same landowner in November. We are in receipt of the second notice of public hearing, Joint Drainage District Number One, Main Open Ditch Repairs, Cassuth and Palo Alto County, Iowa letter, postmarked October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four. As previously stated in our objection letter to you dated July eighth, twenty-twenty-four, we still firmly and absolutely object to any and all proposed repairs and expenses that would be at our cost and expense. Again, due to the exorbitant amount of money that we've had to pay for the previous failed repairs to the same area, we believe the previous engineering firm, previous repair companies and those involved should be held accountable and liable for the current situation and costs. Any and all money that we have, we had slash have paid for the previous failed repairs should automatically be applied to any and all future damages and repairs. Yes, I agree with that. Jolene Berkland, July. I object to further repairs to the main open ditch currently being discussed. I recently paid eight thousand dollars in additional tax assessments on the sixty acres I own in Fairfield Township, Palo Alto County. I object to paying any more additional monies to this project. Uh, Jolene Berkland again, and this was late October. Uh, I object to all further tax assessments on this project. I own sixty acres in Palo Alto County and have already paid, already buy assessed thousands of dollars for this project. I am not in favor of any future procedures that would incur further tax assessments to my property. Any questions? Please contact me if you have a phone number and thank you. And then objection by Mary Jo. Schlapthia, Schlatia, Michael Tilges, Beatrice Eichen, and Lloyd Tilges. These landowners within the above-captured drainage districts hereby object at or before the time fixed for hearing on November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four as follows. Number one. Amendment number two to the engineer's report dated September sixth, twenty-twenty-four duly notes its purpose together with the original report and prior amendment to include discussion regarding various options and costs for repairing the banks and the main open ditch. The report and amendments thereto insufficiently address the cause of damage to the banks. Although the report is written to suggest in a cursory manner that the current damage can be chalked up to a May twenty-twenty-three flood event, the report's text still admits the fact that there is more to blame. In parentheses, as noted in the original report, quote, "This flood event combined with the other previously described conditions appear to have been the primary causes of the damages that occur," end quote. Number four. The twenty-twenty-three flood event alone cannot be blamed. While bad, the weather's impact alone should not be overstated. As noted in the amendment, parentheses, as noted in the amendment number two, quote, "As previously discussed, the twenty-twenty-three damages to the main open ditch are ineligible for FEMA funding," end quote. Number five, simply put, the limitations noted within the report and amendments do not permit trustees to obligate the district to paying full costs of any repair options, at least without also fulfilling a duty to make further investigation and seek contribution towards repair. Number six. For example, the current engineer report notes the prevalence of sand slash gravel in the ditch banks. This fact should have been factored into the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one major repair either in the recommendations or the actual repair work or both. Number seven, for a further example, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one repair project work was done in four, done forward in respect to leveling the dirt on the top of the ditch banks as indicated in reports by the people in the district. This fact of observed poor quality work at the top of the banks without immediate effect itself now suggests the quality of actual work within the banks has contributed to the current damage. Number eight. Even if the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one work was approved in the past, it has now at the present time become apparent that for whatever specific reasons the main open ditch was left too steep in light of its composition. The past approval and/or release of a bond does not bar claims now discovered. There is a duty to pursue further investigation and/or claims and/or suit in light of what has been reported. Given what has now emerged, it would be irresponsible to assess the full cost of the current repair onto the people of the district without further pursuit of our options seeking contribution. And that's, that was, that came through Attorney James L. Lauer.
So I got a question. Would this riprap only on severe sites? And you've got those places that it's almost, have two cricks through there. You know, they've fluff, it's slumped off that much. What, what are you gonna do with those?
I think that you, you said something the same thing back there.
Where, you mean like where it's slumped off a whole?
Yeah, there's almost two cricks down in the box, right?
Yeah.
Where, where are you gonna, where are you gonna riprap that? How are you gonna approach that?
So if there's, if there's any part of it at the top that's vertical, that's gotta, that'll get pulled back and off and then take that and put it down at the toe, because it's dry material. Um, and then if there's some of the bottom stuff will get pulled out as part of that. And if it's, you know, we might have them let it sit so it dries out and then try to put that, that down at the bottom too and then put the riprap on top of that.
So you can reestablish the bottom then?
It probably in most cases won't get back exactly to the design width. It'll be wider. But as much material as available to, to build that back out will do that. So it would, it might look like, well, there's some rip, we build that out and then put riprap and then there could be more of a flat kind of an area shell and then, and then up to the edge of the chain. That's the best I can describe it. And it's obviously gonna vary site to site depending on how, how bad it washed out.
I don't think you're, if I understand option number two, right, the bank reshaping, I don't think you can just do, we're gonna do this for the whole length.
Right.
If, if it's held so far, chances are it's gonna hold again. We went through two catastrophic floods already. So why fix up when it's not growing? There's other areas where there is sand. You may need a two-to-one or a three-to-one in those areas. But to say you're gonna do the whole thing two-to-one or the whole thing three-to-one or whatever, I, I don't think you can make a point statement of that. You're gonna have to do each site as necessary. So I, I almost think you need kind of a blend between your four A and I don't know what bank flattening versus bank shaping was.
Yeah, so the bank flattening, that can, yeah, that's the one where it's the lower twenty miles on both sides. The bank shaping, that has a bunch of riprap included in it for the worst sites. Um, but i- it's only where there's damage. It's not just going the whole full twenty miles. And it'd be just shaping back where we can. The worst site still would be riprap under that option number two. Um, but where we can, we try to do better shape. Any other?
Any other questions or comments from landowners? Or with, with that explanation from Colin on the bank shaping option two, does that change anyone's perspectives on two versus four A and four B?
It's still like three.
Any discussion between our boards here? You guys got any thoughts, Palo Alto?
Yep, say, say, yeah. Well, okay, so on this original project. It was a repair.
Yep.
So you're, you're repaired as you're going. So when, when they, they were told to dig that out and pull it back up. In the process of that happening, did it become apparent that the slopes were gonna be too steep?
Yeah, they're unmanaged.
They did, huh? They did take the slopes down on the top. But I mean, the vertical, vertical slope became, you know, one-to-one or, you know.
It, it would have gone one and a half to one.
That, that, it sounds like just, I mean, I've never seen it, you know, there's trees holding the bank. Yeah, we took the trees out and then sand over gravel. But my point is, is, is at that point in time, did it become apparent that something needed to change? Maybe, maybe it should have been pulled back farther to a two-to-one.
We did.
Okay, but that's what I, going back to that gentleman, it's, it's, it's almost like, you know, there's, you've got a wide variance of soil types. It, it, it seems like that these spots need to be treated almost individually.
They do.
And is that taken into account in what, you know, you're proposing to do?
On option four A.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe that's even like two, because that's, that's more individualized, but it's the whole list, right, Colin?
Yeah, the options, yeah, options one and two are repairing damages to specific sites that are damaged.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All the damage lists.
Yeah.
And then the four A and B are just the most severe ones. So it is looking at, you know, a site specific basis.
I mean, when you have a, when you design a project and then you have a contractor do the project, the contractor's out there working on a daily basis, they're gonna know things change. There needs to be, you know, and I don't know what happened last time. I mean, you know, but there was communication between the contractor and the engineer that did it. It seems like that fell apart. But I'm just, you know, because you've got multiple different soil types, you know, you've got blacks, black dirt and you've got sand.
Yeah.
That has to be accounted for. And it's a little hard to just pick which one of these suits that best option. From, from standing back a long way, I, I.
Yeah, and along those lines, like, let's say we're doing bank shaping for just damaged sites. If, let's say right next to that, it's steeper, maybe it's one and a half to one or one-to-one. And then it's sandy right there and then the damaged spot, we pull that back to three-to-one or something. Then all of a sudden you have this, you know, how, and you leave that vulnerable. That was sort of the thought on the option three was, let's take the, the reach that's the worst and let's just flatten that all back to a consistent slope so it's not diving in and out and leaving spots vulnerable. So the, yeah. It's, it's difficult to just say, pick that one when you're looking at a list of five.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot that goes into each one.
I know, but I actually began on mine and none of them really fit it. I mean, I had that. I had, it was perfect just the way it was. Then they did the ditch and fixed it. All the water would come down to the bottom of the pasture and there wasn't access to the creek. The water would go right through that, right back into the creek. Now they did it and it's six feet high all the way across the water stage in my country. I had two great lakes this year. And all it needs to do is get it flattened back out and get that access back in.
You're talking about the spoils that caused that?
The guy that did the ditch.
Yeah, probably needs surface drains if it's holding it.
You're welcome to come out and look any time you want. I look at it every day.
What do you think, Colin?
I think that they voted. They showed hands, they voted. I think you're gonna have to go along with that. And, uh, you know, that's why I asked Colin if they can make some, Keith, you can say what you wanna say.
Well, I, I give it any way you can. People look to me overwhelmingly, they just wanted to object more. I think what you know, what I was thinking.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, you know, we didn't go to have that disaster the first time that happened to me, I would feel just like they do.
I guess I would, I would ask that the engineer go a little bit above and beyond with checking this as the work is being done. Is, you know.
So I apologize.
Not just like once a week or, but I mean, I think you're gonna have to be out there pretty regular, you know, checking the progress and, and looking at the results and maybe stepping in and say, oh, this is, this isn't quite right. You need to, you need to do this and this and this.
Have they ever done that?
Well, it's supposed to.
I know, you're correct. And they're never out there.
So, so I apologize. I've been privy to the upfront conversation, but, but, so Steve and I voted differently. I mean, I voted for option three and Steve and I voted for option four A. I like my concern, and, and I don't have a huge dog in this fight. I've got some acres that, that come into this drainage district or the but I'm not next to the ditch by any means, like we were in sixty-one for five miles straight. My concern on Steve's behalf or, or anyone really is, is do I know, does this tell me what is included in four A?
That?
No. Well, that's my only thing is, you know, Steve says, hey, I got five miles that are on this, this ditch and it's, and it's all bad or, or three and a half are bad. Well, maybe only three-quarters of a mile would be in four A. Well, that ain't gonna make, you know, that's my only concern.
That's gonna fix the problem.
The place to look if you wanna see this in amendment number two and hopefully there's a few copies you had up there, but there's maps on the back that show the severe damage sites. That's what I, I was showing these maps and said that the majority of the severe stuff is between West Bend and Highway eighteen.
Right.
Did you start pulling up there?
Yeah, I can pull it up. And yeah, there's a lot of information here that, I, I know it's, it's nice to be able to have it all here to go to specifics, but
No, I try to balance that. I'm not blaming anything for lack of information here. I just, I know that four A is kind of a pick and choose and.
Yeah. I, I think you're saying if you look out your back window and your ditch looks bad and you think it's gonna get fixed and it doesn't get fixed, you'll rather check and be pissed about it and, you know.
And again, I don't have a dog in the fight as it relates to that, because I'm not on the ditch.
Yep.
I was wondering, when you guys decide to do this project and fix the bad spots, will the landowners along these drainage ditches be notified that they're gonna be on their land to fix these spots?
Yes.
So are these all of your list of damaged sites there, Colin, for the four A and four B?
So these. So these, these are the bank sites. So this, these maps actually don't show the pipes.
Okay, yep.
So there there's additional spots where there's pipes, but these are, this is showing the banks.
Okay.
And yeah, with with in amendment two, and again, not enough copies for everybody, but I've got seven thousand or seven thousand eight hundred fifty-seven linear feet of. Uh, or tons of riprap, and that would cover that same amount of feet of of bank. And so that's, and that's a big portion of the cost of that option four A. And then it include, there's with that option, there's no, um. Channel bottom excavation, so we had some of that in the options one through three where there was stuff in the bottom, let's take it out now. I caveat that a little bit because have the exact spots where we would do riprap, if there's stuff right there, that's gonna get pulled out. But just, we're not going all over to pull out, you know, chunks of grass and and clean it out. There wouldn't be, wouldn't be bank shaping, you know, basically, we're fixing the most severe sites with riprap. And then also fixing the outlets, the pipes that need to be fixed. And then the last thing is, there's a rock, yeah, there's a rock chute, that was kind of referenced in an objection. That wasn't done as part of the last repair project, but there's some pasture, but there's a rock chute in that's droughted riprap. And just in our process of, you know, investigating, we saw that that. That was being undermined, and so something really needs to be done there, that's gonna, that's gonna be. So that's basically what what's included in option four A.
I guess one of my questions, maybe even for the boards here, is, I mean, in Colin's kind of pro and con summary on the back page. It's got, if we choose four A or four B, is ditch will need to be closely monitoring for worsening damages, I guess, who's gonna do that? Are we, are we gonna wait for landowners to turn in repair requests? Are we gonna have a plan where an engineering firm is gonna go out there once a year for the next five years or ten years to inspect things? Are we just leaving it up to individuals kind of watching, like? How are we managing that? Because I think that is important, too.
I I'd recommend a drone, I mean, doing a drone, I think, I don't know if we did it in a day or a day and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
Could do a drone video and you could do that as as often as once a year, you could do it if there was a flood event, just like go out there after. But somebody'd have to remember, hey, we need to.
Make a phone call, yep.
So that's a good hope.
And then another one on that list was the individual permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, that takes six months, if we start now, maybe not a big deal, but.
Right, and if a decision is made today, I would, I would start that process immediately. I haven't applied yet cuz we didn't know where the riprap was gonna go, they need to know that. And I don't think, by the way, that that stops us from proceeding, proceeding on with plans and specs, bidding. Um, we just couldn't start putting riprap until. We can have it ready, ready to go, basically, um, and start that process.
Yep.
Do we have to let bids know or what?
Yeah, we'll, for this, for this one.
So we're fresh one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Is there any way that you can exclude Cory Jurings from the bid process? Cuz it would be a travesty if he was allowed to bid on this his second go around after he screwed it up the first time.
Yes.
And he screwed it up.
What was the?
I wanna hear that, what?
Come hire the guy that did this.
Cory Jurings is the one who did this, and it was a travesty what he did, cuz I live on this, I see and I've watched him. What they did was subpar at best.
Come hire him.
Can supervisors?
Yes.
We can, we can reject any bids that we do not feel are.
But I think that would be in your best interest long term and not ever go with him again.
And by the way, on that topic, if there's a contractor that meet, I mean, that that's the case, be it whoever it is. What I'd recommend is not even opening their bid.
Oh, you can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would it be beneficial to allow more than one contractor to do this bid, maybe do, you know, north eighteen and south eighteen or whatever? Because originally, that was a thirty mile project, that's, you you take out a lot of good contractors.
Are are you thinking breaking it into pieces, like two or three pieces?
Yeah, is is, is that even feasible?
We could consider that, um, and here, and option two is you can break it into sections and then. A contractor can bid on all the sections or just one of them. And then you just pick the lowest bidder for each section, and it might just be one contractor who's the lowest bid on all of them. And there's a balancing act, because you don't want four, maybe if you have four contractors and you're trying to watch four separate people and have four separate contracts. It starts to lose some of the benefits, cuz it's a mess, with just too many people, too many things going on. But a couple, I don't think that's a bad idea.
But your problem on bidding for A, then you have mobilization by the contractor, maybe you'd have double fees on some of the. Does he usually charge you so much to come in and start?
Yeah.
Just depends on how aggressive they wanna be, to be quite honest, I mean, you might have twenty thousand in mobilization, but you might have one that. Had just, is more aggressive on one area or another, or a smaller size project or something, so I mean, it it is a balancing act, but there are pros and cons both ways.
I think the balance is, if you believe that splitting it, splitting it apart into a smaller project, that a smaller contractor now can bid. And you have more competition, if the thought, the hope is, is that the more competition, that the lower bid price would outweigh the additional cost of of another mobilization. Does that make sense?
Yeah, compiling all the figures to see which one come off the cheapest.
Right.
That's.
Yeah.
These budgets usually take a long range and some of those contractors are pretty much kicked out anyway cuz they don't pay all the mortgage.
Is what's the time, is this like timing, if you went with four A, we'll say, is it already this summer or it's next summer?
I don't think four A, I don't think the peasants or whatever you call that nesting area applies if you do, just do it certain areas. You can go in and do a repair. It only applies if you tear the whole bank out.
Which would be more argumental for A, obviously. But I'm asking, I'm asking, when are we gonna do it? Yeah, yeah, when you're gonna do it, I mean.
Uh, the hope would be next.
Next summer.
Right, coming in seven months, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
So when's the best to put out bids yet this year, or can you get that in, or first of the year or what?
Um, this time of the year is typically pretty good because contractors are looking to fill their schedule for the following year.
Well, let's schedule something, something.
So, I mean, yeah, if a decision is made, I I think we're gonna apply for that permit and work on getting the the plans and specification ready for. Put out the bank.
Yeah, is there, is there any other comments anyone would like to make while the public hearing is open? Any other questions, comments?
Go ahead.
Keith, uh, Craig? I was told that in Allen County that there's a committee of some sort that puts landowners in a, to vote on drainage district projects. Is that, is that correct, or how do you do?
Say that again, or I mean, what do you get with?
That there's like a committee that is made up of more than just supervisors on your, uh, drainage district? Don't?
I don't think so, I mean, I mean, we we talk to landowners all the time.
We got some, we got, there's three or four or five, uh, drainage districts that are controlled by trustees. Okay.
Yeah.
And, well, you guys, um, Fred is on one of them. Okay, that's one I'm thinking of, so then trustee. Yeah, so their trust, their three of them trustees have one, and we got, we got, uh, Carmen's gone, but I think we got four or five of them like that.
Yeah, we we have a couple like that as well.
Well, they basically haven't named the board.
So, yeah, the the districts have the ability to set their own trustees that are landowners of the district, and if they don't, then the board supervisors is trustees by default. But it's the same role that you're fulfilling, it's just who would.
Essentially, you have this meeting, but it's done in somebody's shop.
Could be.
Somebody else sits in their chair and, you know.
Right.
Yes, there's advantages both ways.
Yep, there is. Any other questions for the public hearing? Questions, comments, going once, going twice? All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still move.
Motion by Jarks, is there a second, Pal Alto?
I'll say it.
Keith, all right, thank you, do we have any discussion on closing the public hearing? All, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Uh, Plath?
Yes.
Jarks?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Seaworks?
Aye.
Solberg? Merrill?
Aye.
Perfect.
Well.
Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, whatever works.
I didn't know who was voting, so.
All right, now that the public hearing is closed, we would have a possibility for action to decide which repair option we are going to proceed with, so.
I would make a motion to do four A.
I don't think four will do me any good at all.
Okay, um, we do, we do have a motion and a second on the ta- on the floor right now for proceeding with option four A, which is. Only repairing severe damaged sites and riprap for bank repairs. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, I I would just like, how would you deal with the landowners knowing if their repair's gonna be made, that's my question.
Repeat that?
This lady says it's not gonna do her any good, I don't know, but I mean, how, when you do the four A, it's not a complete rebuild, so. How is a landlord gonna know if their spot that's been damaged is gonna be fixed?
He just showed it up on the.
Yeah, it would, it would be, they would have to correlate it on that map, which they're wrong.
He's saying it'd be all those spot, or is it?
All, all the spots that had red dots, yes, but that's not all the damage that's out there.
And and he, and Colin needs to talk to her if, to put a culvert in or something. No, there's, if there, if she's got a link and backed it up.
I just think that that's a.
I didn't tell her to fix it, didn't tell her to fix it, right?
I I have the same thing in my place, so we could've called her, I paid for it myself.
Oh, I don't, I wanted to just go back to the, where it was, just to, outlet right back in.
Yeah. I would say even also just on that topic, I would give her, if we go forward with four A. And we put, and put it out to bid and everything, not that we wanna do bunches of change orders or something, but if there's something specifically that a landlord says. Oh, it's not on here, and could you look at this, and I look at it and like, okay, I, and let you all make a decision, should we? Just go ahead and do a change order and.
That's a good option, because I I I just think it's good, it's a point of contention where I thought this was gonna be fixed, and it wasn't fixed, you know, and so.
Yeah, and not that we want to just change order, you know, a ton more on, but you can look at specific, a specific site and and together decide, should we, should we fix this?
Yeah, I I agree.
Cuz, cuz four A.
Is there, there, the tree mound, they have some, that's what I mean, what they think the neighbors did.
Yeah, yes.
It does include fixing the pipes, the trees, my understanding is, is that's on a rotation, so I don't, I assume there's not gonna be separate action on that.
We won't need action there.
You guys have BMW?
Yeah.
Yeah, he does, on a three-year cycle.
Three years, like, cuz I got ten trees that are hurting us. Well, there is, I mean. Addressing super, and a three-year rotation.
Reloaded or something?
We don't want that, yeah.
It's done that a couple of times.
Direct results, or if you have some of the bad.
It wasn't your idea.
That was good, you had Craig?
Yeah, and I, I do appreciate the option to have change orders and we can evaluate that, I, one of my concerns there, though, is. If we tell people we're gonna spend, was it seven hundred thousand dollars? And then we get halfway into it and all of a sudden it turns out to be a one point three million dollar project, because we're like, oh, these spots should've actually been fixed. And that's, that's maybe some of my concern, if we're gonna focus on just the areas that need damage. I I don't know where we really draw the line, I mean, option two kind of would be. Uh, a hybrid between fixing everything and cutting blank, open new banks versus. Four A and four B are only the severe sites, at least option two would be addressing all of the damage that we know to date, so to speak. And I'd be concerned about longevity there, to be, to be honest, I mean. I don't, I don't wanna be back here in five years having the same conversation again, I think, I think that's what we're all upset about right now.
We hope that those are fixed, if they wanna add to it after five years, we hope that they stay that you got done, you know, that.
What grass would you recommend putting on the sides for, to hold it where it doesn't slowly shift down?
We have a.
Yeah.
A molten and second on the floor.
Gotta be one and third than any other.
We, we can have a conversation about that separately, we do have a motion and second on the floor, but is there any other discussion amongst the boards here?
Oh, God, we just talked about, uh, we're gonna have the option of of time to pay?
We did not discuss that for waivers yet, but we can, we can, we can follow up with motion after that, or.
You're getting a pretty few dollars if you give, give them some years to pay.
Yep, yep, we typically offer waivers for large projects, but, I mean.
Yeah, we do, too.
Yep. Do you want that, do you wanna incorporate that here in an amendment?
Should we have that in the, included with that, okay?
Sure.
Ten or twenty, what do you think?
You wanna go ten or twenty?
That's the landlord.
You guys wanna go ten or twenty years?
You guys wanna go ten years for twenty years for an option, you guys pay it off early, it's just an option.
I would go ten, but I mustn't pay people use the twenty, we paid ours off the last time, so I would just go ten, I would just go ten.
Keith, you wanna make a motion to amend and add ten?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to amend and give ten years for payment.
I will second that motion to amend to add ten years.
You guys go David up?
Yeah. You guys, what do you guys have for interest rate right now?
Five.
We are the same as well. Yeah, other, other hand there. Um, are you good with incorporating that in your motion to amend, Keith?
Yeah.
Okay, I will add that in with mine as well, so ten years, option for ten years at five percent interest. Anything else for discussion here on the motion?
Vote on the option first.
What's that? No, we, that's amended into the motion.
Got amended interest.
So we have to vote on the amendment, then we can vote on the main motion. Um, so right now, what we would be voting on is to add in the five percent interest for ten years. Roll call, vote on that, please.
Plath? Jarks?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Aye.
Solberg?
Aye.
Merrill?
Yes.
Okay, now that the amendment is taken care of, the motion on the floor would be to go with option four A. And that would encompass the ten-year waivers at five percent interest. Any discussion on the motion again? All right, roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jarks?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
All right, we can proceed with that for plan, Colin, do you need anything else or anything on your radar?
I guess on the Walter Bradley objection or comment, those four surface drains, you want me to look anymore at that?
You feel they might be too much, or?
I think it's possible, yes. And it's not like it would take much, but basically, I just want a yes or no on that, as he was asking about.
What would we gain by removing a surface intake at this point in time? I mean, obviously, if you repair the pipe, you have a cost for replacing it. But what would we gain for just taking something out?
And he, I think he wants to take all of them. And I'm pretty confident that I will not be recommending that. It's just a matter of taking, how, how many do we actually need? But I don't think that's probably gonna change things for him, so I.
Do you want him to put gates on it so they can't back, he's, it sounds like he's concerned about back feeding back onto his land.
Yeah, that would be an option. His land, I mean, it is low, really low right there.
That might be what he's really.
Or like it has to, when it overflows, it fills up that bottom land. I mean, that has to fill all the way up for any such stuff.
And.
Surface drains are not surface drains, they're surface outlets.
Yeah, well, what about, what about like reviewing it briefly, but then just making notes that if there is more than it needs? Say, instead of replacing these down the road, just remove them if they're in poor condition, or remove two of the four, or. One of the four or something, I mean.
I could do that.
I could see some notes like that being helpful maybe, but otherwise, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend a bunch of money to dig out a pipe if it's. Okay, right now.
You can put funds on.
Yeah.
So there's no.
Yeah.
Um, let me just make sure that there's nothing else I could do.
And I mean, we talked about the tree spraying. We can proceed with getting that done, but if it's gonna be disturbed by construction, I don't know. How much of that we do at this point, or if we wait and get it after the project is done?
Yeah, it, it really, and I don't think this one needs a decision, but the nesting season thing, um. I think I'm gonna send it.
You can voluntarily do it, right? We always have geese that go down by the creek.
Yeah. Well, no, what I'm saying is if you've got a buffer strip along the ditch during the nesting season, May first, I think to.
Yeah.
May fifteenth, August first. They don't want you doing any sort of disturbing activities at the buffer strip. So I, I, if I haven't, I thought I maybe did, but I need to send out another letter. And for landowners along the ditch to request these waivers. Um, and I guess. There should theoretically be time unless there's an environmental review that causes problems, but. And maybe we have to circle back to that. But if they come back and say, we're not giving you a waiver to that landowner, and we need to go on the property to do the. To do the repair, how are we gonna handle that? Like, are we gonna say, we can't go on there during the nesting season, or we're just gonna go on there and?
Well, unfortunately, I bet the contractor that's bidding on it is gonna want an answer to that too.
That's what, that's, that's why I bring it up now, because I'll have to put that in the specs, yeah.
Is it a difference when you do an improvement or repairs?
Um.
Is that an attorney question, like?
I don't think it is.
Good question to.
Because if it seemed like a repair, it's always.
Yeah. We still have, it still applies though.
It does.
Dumping, or you're digging and you're dumping. For a repair.
But isn't anything like cleaning.
Yeah, because we have the waiver of right of way, but, buffer strip ban.
They should be.
So far, that superseded the FSA.
Do they have that?
No.
Okay, um, Roger, you wanna, so Colin, we just talked about that a little bit. We have a ban of buffer strips, but then they can apply to get basically an exemption from that. Um, so.
We're the only county that makes the FSA office. Bring the designated filter strips into our boardroom and we vote on whether to allow them to have filter strips or not on our dredge ditches.
Okay.
And it supersedes their nesting order in most cases, because they're asking permission for us to put their ground in.
Okay, so we might need to look at that a little closer, because we might have that covered to some.
Don't think that they can prevent us from doing a maintenance, it's in that, it was part of that, it's part of that contract.
Okay, is that something that you got a copy of in the auditor's office?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have that.
I could get a copy of that. Yeah, that.
So you can check. I think a year ago, we, we need to count that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
That'd be a good thing.
I mean, with, nothing against buffer strips along drainage ditches, but we gotta be able to get in there to do repairs.
Yeah.
So if they're gonna come in there and then think that they run the show, that's a problem.
So far, they have never given us an issue.
Yeah.
They did it a number of years ago.
All right, well, thank you everyone for coming. I know a lot of luck today, but, and you guys for driving over.
The next one we can pull is beyond, it's on the phone.
Yeah.
Um, well, no, our public, we'll, we'll finish our meeting, but yeah, our public hearing. All right. Motion by Nash, I'll second it currently.
I don't think I've ever been to a Sioux County Board of Supervisors meeting. It's kinda, thank you, man.
Zach, Roger, no, thank you.
You can call Pizza Hut.
We go down to Pizza Ranch and get it right away.
See you, guys.
Bye.
See you. See you, guys. Zach, Roger, we have motion to adjourn. All favors, Zach.